Okay, let's call this meeting to order. It's very nice to have a lot of live participants. Thanks for coming. Thanks for people on Zoom. I'd like to start this meeting with a moment of silence for Nancy Cronin, who has passed away. Nancy was a longtime town clerk and very active in many volunteer groups, like the League of Women Voters. So if we could just have a moment of silence. Thank you. We have one member who is not able to join us tonight. And we will start with the consent calendar.
First, I'd like to make an amendment or propose an amendment to the consent agenda, which is to actually release the executive session minutes. So to strike, not to be released, because the matter discussed at that executive session is now up public.
Okay.
Any second to that motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the Town Accountant Warrant of March 31, 2022, the revised November 22, 2021 executive session minutes, and the gift acceptance from James B. Terry Jr. of $100,000 for the electrification of municipal vehicles and equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. And thanks very much for that gift.
Thanks so much. Very generous gift. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. Absentee voting by mail is now available. The deadline to apply for absentee ballots by mail is 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 6. The deadline to apply in person for absentee ballots.
Sorry. It's not. The deadline to apply in person for absentee ballots is noon on Monday, April 11, and all absentee ballots must be returned to the town clerk's office by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, which is Tuesday, April 12. I wanted to announce that we had a retirement last week. Firefighter Arthur St. John retired from the Concord Fire Department. He had served for the fire department for over 30 years. He was appointed to the fire department in October, 1990. Prior to that, he was a full-time employee of the Public Works Department. He served as a call firefighter prior to his full-time employment with the fire department. And he is among a small group of employees who were instrumental in the early days of GIS systems implementation in town. And he has served as the GIS liaison for the fire department to the Department of Information Technology. And he has been instrumental in providing access to critical information in helping to prepare for emergencies. Arthur is a lifelong resident of the town of Concord, and we all wish him well in his retirement. Just a few additional updates. April is Autism Awareness Month. There was some information in your packet about all of the activities that the police department is undertaking to support autism awareness, including wearing patches on Fridays. Patches are also available for purchase at the police station. They will be displaying blue lights in the police station. Over the weekend, they participated in the Light It Up Blue event. There are some additional events going on in support of autism awareness, including some training that officers will undertake this month. All the proceeds from the sale of patches will be donated by the Relief Association to Minuteman Arc. There's some information in the packet about some public works projects. We are getting ready to resume work on Hubbard Street this month. We will be restriping the parade route prior to the parade, so the road looks nice for everybody who is coming out to view that event. We have a contract for crack sealing. There's some information about some of the other work that we are doing, including improvements to Commonwealth Ave. The Highway and Grounds Division opened the compost site this past weekend. It is now open on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 and Saturdays, 9:00 to 3:00 throughout the season. It is available to all Concord residents for non-commercial purposes. There's some information in the packet about rebates that CMLP is offering for air-source heat pumps, either for whole home or for partial home improvements. Some additional information on Mass Save Grants also for the air-source heat pumps. This Saturday, we opened the Bike Share Program. We have two locations with bikes available in Concord Center, at the Visitor Center, and in West Concord at the MBTA Lot. I happened to be out today, and I did see two of the five bikes were gone, so people are already making use of it. It's really nice if you're interested in. You don't want to bring your bike to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. You can actually rent a bike and take it out for an hour or so. There's a lot of additional information in the packet. I'm happy to answer questions. I don't want to take up any more of your time, because I know you have a busy agenda this evening.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
I would just like to highlight that the rebates you mentioned, Carrie, are extremely generous for the air-source heat pumps, so I hope people will tune into that information.
Right. So up to $10,000 locally for the air-source heat pump rebate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Will there be a spring swap-off, drop-off event this year?
There is. I don't remember the date. I was just talking to Melissa Simoncini last week. She's the staff person at CPW that organizes the event, and I can get that date out to you.
Well, I'm also just curious whether the procedures that had been changed for COVID are going to change back to a more normal mode of operation.
Yeah. So we will get information out on that, because we were talking about procedures as well.
Okay. Because at least for me, I consider myself a less than competent homeowner, that, you know, to be able to prepare in advance and tell everybody exactly what I'm going to bring, you know, well in advance and pay in advance is impractical, let's say.
That's also how some of us furnish our homes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Chair's remarks. We have the town election on April 12. May 1 is the town meeting. It's a Sunday at 1:00 p.m. at the high school. Also, there's a pretty long list of events now for Patriots' Day, which is really exciting. We haven't been able to do that in a few years. Please check the website for all the events. Most of them are Patriots' Day weekend, but one is this coming weekend. Also, there will be a public forum held by the Fiber Broadband Task Force on April 14 at 7:00 p.m. in the townhouse. Please try and attend either in live or by Zoom. And I wanted to ask the board members, next week, are you available to come at 6:00 p.m. for an executive session?
Yep.
Two yeses and one maybe. Henry, let me know. Okay. We want you to schedule that with counsel. Okay. Thank you. All right. We now go to the request for handout at town meeting from the Concord for Ukraine Group. I see Heather and Phil, if you'd like to come up.
Do you want us to join you?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. So we realize your time is fully occupied, so we're going to be brief. I'm going to start. And Heather, who's filling in for Carrie Rankin, who's just come down with COVID.
Oh.
Yeah. So, anyway, good evening to all of you. My name is Phil Villers. I live at 20 Witzen Road, have lived there for 50 years. But I actually came to this country as a refugee when I was five, left France two hours ahead of the German army. So I was fortunate enough to become an American. What we want to talk about is the work of Concord for Ukraine, a humanitarian campaign to provide medical supplies and related to the many victims in the Ukraine. Let's spend a moment to talk about what's going on in Ukraine, although I'm sure you're also well-informed. This is This Morning Globe, which I'll pass around, front page. As you've probably read, around the capital of Ukraine, a number of towns have just been freed, and they're finding horrible things. People have been tortured. Civilians had their hands bound behind their backs before being shot in the head. And this is just for the first few towns that have been freed again. So that's the North. In the South, a very large city, Maripol, with normally 430,000 inhabitants, is totally in ruins because of shelling, bombing, missiles, the whole nine yards. Where the people from Maripol, the ones who are still there, and the Russians have prevented most, or at least a great many, to be able to leave, are living in basements or cellars, no electricity, no water, and they're starving. So this is the humanitarian crisis the world is watching. A number of towns have passed resolutions of solidarity with the people of Ukraine, and we're hopeful that Concord, through your hands, will do the same. I might add, you came to here with a proposed resolution on that, and we just found out that Henry Dane had written something that was significantly superior. So we would be happy to have you consider a better version written by a lawyer, which I'm not. In Maripol, back to the South there, the bombing has paid special attention to hitting hospitals, schools, and refugee centers. This is the kind of inhuman behavior that we in Concord have a long tradition of speaking out, and that's what we're talking about.
So, Phil, I don't mean to cut you off. This is.
I was about to stop and turn it over to Heather.
Okay. So I understand that you are here for two things tonight. One is to ask the Select Board for a resolution, and the other is about a handout at town meeting.
Yes.
Heather will speak to both.
Well, I don't know. I will not keep going on, but why don't I get into logistics for a minute first? I probably have to state.
Well, I was just going to say, let's do one of the things at a time.
Okay.
So since you've talked about the resolution, do you want to redo that first?
Sure. That's fine. They do connect, although we can do the resolution first, and then I can give you more of the background on what the handout is. If you need my name and address for the record, it's Heather Bowden. I'm at 52 Simon Millard Road.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, I mean, no question, it's a horrific situation.
It is.
And many of us are very eager to help, so that is certainly not.
That's great. So let me just quickly, before we get to the motion itself, let me just tell you what we are doing to help and how we're hoping to enable other Concord residents to do the same. So we're a group who's come together, obviously feeling helpless and wanting to do something. Thanks to Igor and Irina Kowal, who spent many years in Ukraine and now are Concord residents. We've connected and partnered with an organization called Ukraine Forward. And the way it works is that they are shipping supplies, medical and even army supplies, to the forces there and to civilians. They're shipping from their location in Jamaica Plain. They're collecting supplies at a church, shipping it over there, and then university students are helping to distribute. The way that we can help is through their website, which is ukrainforward.org. And I'm sorry if the link was wrong. It said .com. If anybody checked to check it out, it's actually ukrainforward.org. So that's, I apologize for the wrong link there. People can either donate directly or can use their Amazon wishlist. And I can tell you how simple it is. I've done it myself. You purchase things from their wishlist. It gets delivered to the church that they're using as a base in Jamaica Plain, and they're shipping things over. So far, they have shipped over $250,000 in supplies. They've collected $50,000 in cash, which they're using for the same thing. $12,000 they've spent on transportation costs, and they've made 12 shipments over there. So this is a way to help in a way that we know for sure that supplies are getting to the right place. Money is not getting lost in administration when you donate. So it's something that we feel strongly about. We would like you to make a statement on behalf of supporting Ukraine. And so that's where we get into this, and it's two phases. One is a statement in support, and like Phil said, we have a short drafted motion, but we are certainly open to something more detailed if somebody wanted to recommend one. I know Henry Dane had something in mind. The second thing is a handout at town meeting, and I do realize that that would have to be approved by the moderator. Our moderator has taken a look at this idea and is open to it, so it would just need a request from this group. And we do have handouts of what the, or sorry, copies of what the handout would look like, because we have plenty of those to share with you.
Okay. We have that. So, okay. Thank you, Heather.
Sure. So now moving to the, do you want to address the motion first?
Well, Henry, do you want to talk about your motion?
You know how diligently I've been pursuing the revival of Patriots' Day and the former ceremonies, and also how earnest I've been about attempting to obtain some participation in those activities by representatives of Ukraine? And being somewhat frustrated by how that has been going, I put together what I thought would be an appropriate proclamation for the town to declare where it stood on these issues and in the context of Patriots' Day, and I would like to read it. And I will pass some copies around. I know that this is, but there are many things that have come before you three minutes ago anyway, but these things have come out of thin air. This is called a proclamation recognizing the suffering and heroism of the Ukrainian people in the struggle for liberty and independence, Patriots' Day, 2022. Whereas a shot fired at the North Bridge 247 years ago still reverberates and calls up the spirit of liberty and human dignity wherever its echo is heard. And whereas against all odds, but with faith in the power of the Almighty and the human spirit, the people of Concord challenge the overwhelming might of the greatest empire on earth with a spirit that craves to be free, independent, and to live in a democratic society that valued human equality. And whereas the people of Concord, either by choice or birth, have received this historic gift as an awesome and sacred responsibility, together with the obligation to preserve and transmit its undiminished blessings to future generations. Whereas since that day in 1775, our men and women have answered the call of freedom over and over again to rise up against tyranny, brutality, and attempts to degrade the human spirit. Whereas if the power of good is still alive within us, deeds of human courage are called for now more than ever because of the overwhelming destructive and coercive powers in the hands of totalitarian governments, giving them the ability to inflict pain and death beyond human imagination or understanding. And whereas the brave and heroic people of Ukraine have fought their oppressors valiantly and for that have suffered beyond measure at the hands of the Russian government, which in a brutal and unprovoked invasion of a free and democratic nation, has shown its determination to destroy without conscience what it cannot possess, has made no attempt to limit destruction to military objectives, and has gloried in the wanton murder, starvation, and abuse of innocent civilians, women, children, elderly, and helpless. And whereas we, the residents of Concord, have a special duty imposed on us, the living heritage of this place we inhabit, and in which the great step taken in the struggle for human dignity and independence long ago has not been forgotten, therefore, it is our sacred duty to support and defend those who, like our predecessors, are now giving their all to defend their own liberty and therefore advance for all the cause of peace with honor. Whereas Patriots' Day is our special occasion to observe the blessings of liberty, humanity, and democracy that have been given to us as a special gift by virtue of belonging to the town of Concord. Now, therefore, the Concord Select Board does hereby declare that the struggle and sacrifice of the Ukrainian people shall be recognized in our observance of Patriots' Day in April in the year of 2022. We invite our residents to welcome representatives of Ukraine to participate in our celebration and urge all freedom-loving people to offer aid and support to the Ukrainian people, both here and in their native country.
Thank you, Henry. Questions, discussion? Linda, Matt?
Thank you for the effort in putting this together. And I think you've linked what's on many people's minds to our own history, so thank you for doing that.
So I do like your proclamation idea much better than the original proposed motion.
I do, too.
I think that, you know, as a human being and as a citizen of the United States, I, you know, clearly deplore, you know, the actions that have been taken to invade Ukraine. You know, there's a lot of suffering that we could recognize. And I do think that one of the things that I like about the proclamation is it does tie it to a concrete action. In other words, we have this event, and we're creating some thematic connection. I'm very uncomfortable generally with us making statements or motions in response to current events, international events, because, you know, there are lots of very serious problems in the world. So, I mean, right now, as we speak, the most serious humanitarian crisis, according to the United Nations, is in Afghanistan. So, you know, do we, as a board, proclaim that we support the people of Afghanistan in order to help them get out of their crisis? And it's easy for us to make a proclamation like this for an issue such as Ukraine, where I think there's near unanimity of support within our country. But if we were also asked to make a proclamation relative to, for example, the Israeli occupation of Palestine, or alternatively Palestinian missile firing into Israel, how would we debate that? How would we conclude our remarks? So my problem is that as we let our passions sort of take control here, we can get swept into affairs that are really not Concord's affairs. I understand, we have a strong tradition of freedom-loving people, and we are a beacon of democracy. I would say the most effective way for us to do that is to work as a town politically as a great democracy, which I believe we are, and that we support as citizens and residents our national government and charitable organizations and others in defense of those great values. But, you know, for us as a town, I'm very concerned about the precedent, because I'm unaware of a prior precedent.
Well, thank you, Matt. I guess those are some really good points you're making about the precedent. And I've been thinking about it, and since I've been on the board, we have signed on to other proclamations. The one that comes to mind is the Holocaust Day. We have definitely signed on to that every year. Now, that's not a current event, but, you know, I agree with you that it's very hard to pick and choose, and where do we draw the line? But I think, I know we have chosen other proclamations in the past, so I guess I come down on supporting this. It is a tough call. I think we should probably also do one for Afghanistan, or we should have already done it. I know. That's the problem.
We should do one for Darfur. We should do one for Myanmar. We should do one for.
No, I agree with that. Yeah.
I don't, you know, I just don't know where we stop.
And actually, if I could interrupt for one second, we need some more chairs in the room, if there's anybody who could help with that. Thanks, Carrie. Thanks, Delia. We haven't had this problem in two years, so it's a problem to have. So I think the board has a choice now. We can either vote to have this proclamation or vote not to have it, or if you really want, we could continue the debate at another meeting. But I don't want to spend the next hour debating it. I think that would not be a good use of our time. I think we all agree that it's a very serious problem in Ukraine, and we all want to help. The question is, how do we do it?
Let me just add this, and I don't want it to become a debate. Of all the questions that Matt referred to, this is the only one that is totally aligned with the policy of our own government and of most of the democratic governments in the world. There is virtually no controversy about this issue, unlike places like Afghanistan, where people might say that actually we were the cause of the problem there. This is one where I think it's a clean issue, and as, and I think I've said before, it's become so universal that it's non-controversial, and it has become non-political, and virtually our entire government policy is consistent with our approach that we're willing to take to it. And I think we do have a special responsibility because of the heritage and history of this town. And this is a unique kind of situation, where we have a clear situation of an independent democratic government, which is being destroyed and conquered without reason.
Right.
And I think, and if they go, you know, our other friends in Europe will be next.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Is everybody ready to vote on whether we're going to have this proclamation or not?
Ms. Ackerman, may I make one more comment?
Oh, sure.
Is that allowed?
Briefly.
I will be very brief. Your discussion, they're all very valid points, and it made me think of something someone said to me recently, which was, in a difficult decision at a time when you're trying to figure out what to do next, and you're thinking down the line, and well, if A, then B, and then what happens? It can be very hard to predict. And she said, sometimes the only thing you can do is think about, what is the next right thing to do? What is the right thing to do right now? And I feel like. And I feel like this is a situation where it's very clear what the right thing to do right now is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion, then?
Is it appropriate for me to make a motion?
Sure.
I will move that the board adopt the proclamation, as I have read it to this meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
All right. Is there any more discussion?
I do believe there's a typo.
Okay.
And now I've lost it, but there's a--
Can we make the motion subject to correcting the typo?
Yes.
Therefore, Matt, where are you looking at?
Our residents to welcome representative of Ukraine. I mean, unless you just have one in mind.
No, I didn't have one. The motion will include the correction of the typographical error.
And therefore, you may want to also add any--
Well--
I think that's actually the old-fashioned appropriate--
Right, but for--
But we don't need to debate--
We don't, yeah, we don't need to debate that.
Please, let's get to the point.
All right. Okay, so we're going to correct representative to representatives, plural. All right, that motion's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, three in favor, one abstained. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy and proud that we, as Concord, are doing that. So the second question, sorry, there's a second one, is we would like to ask you to basically ask the moderator for permission to have these handouts at town meeting. They have been laid out so that they're according to the rules of town meeting handouts. She has seen them in advance. I'll pass them around here. Do you want to pass them?
Well, we've already had them passed around.
Okay, great.
Right. We also have them in the packet.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, if you could, sorry, I didn't want to rush you--
No, that's fine.
But we're just, yeah.
So that's probably all you need from me. I'll be quiet and let you discuss.
Madam Chair, this is the moderator. I have actually not seen that handout.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had.
My bad.
Well, the handout arrived today, Carmen, and we had a draft wording in the packet, if you want to take a look at that. If the Select Board votes to request that the moderator put this on the table, you know, we'll certainly send you-- is this a draft handout, or is this the handout?
It is the handout.
The handout, if it needed edits, I think we'd be happy to edit. And I want to apologize, as Phil said earlier, I'm stepping in for someone else, and so I had a misunderstanding of the communication earlier.
Right. So our job, as Carmen has informed me, is to either request or not request that the moderator make an exception to the policy. The policy now is only town meeting materials can go on the inside handout table at town meeting. All other handouts are usually handed out right outside the door. And there are many, many nonprofits that have handed out literature outside when you walk into town hall. And in fact, Phil and I talked about that by telephone. So if the board now recommends that we have an exception, we will request that of the moderator and send you the packet that is being, the handout that is being proposed. So is there a discussion from board members?
So--
Linda?
I feel it's perfectly appropriate for this to be on the tables outside of the townhouse, and that we do not request the moderator to make an exception for this. And my rationale for that is that I do feel that Matt's point well-taken earlier, that the proclamation is a tool and technique that we've used in the past to highlight solidarity with certain issues that are brought before us. However, this is a, there is a fundraising component that's before us right now, and I think that there are multiple avenues and groups in town that are also very concerned about this issue, and may also likely may want to be represented in terms of leaflets and so forth at town meeting outside on the tables that where it's appropriate for that to occur. So that's the reason for the position I take on this, taking nothing away for the wonderful efforts that you're doing and what you represent, but--
Phil, if you want to have a brief response to that?
Yes. In the light of the very elegant resolution that you've just passed, I believe it's no longer an exception at all, because the rules are that any town committee can request to have material there. When we drafted it, we thought it would be an exception. I don't think it is anymore.
Okay. Further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with the content, the specific content of the handout, just having had no opportunity. As much as I hear nice things about this Ukraine Forward, which actually also is the name of the social democratic party in Ukraine, so it's really a little unclear whether there's an association there.
No, there isn't.
Okay, well, that's an unusual thing. And then that it's asking us to buy things from Amazon, you know, a specific commercial organization. It just doesn't seem appropriate for the town to be selecting these particular organizations and seeking, you know, to solicit contributions from our citizens to these particular things. It's fine for anybody, any citizen, to do that, and I, again, applaud efforts to help the citizens of Ukraine, but we, as a town, to endorse an individual, you know, organization, you know, without going through a process, you know, it's not consistent with our, you know, approach to conducting business as a town. So, you know, I would say that it is not the right kind of information for the town to be distributing within town meeting.
Okay. Henry, do you have any comments you want to make?
I think I've made enough trouble already.
Okay, all right. I think, I agree with Linda and Matt. I am not comfortable endorsing a particular business, such as Amazon, or any other, singling out any particular business, or even singling out one particular nonprofit. There could be three or four different nonprofits that want to donate to Ukraine. So I think, again, we're all united that we really want to support, and individually, very impressed with this group, but as a town committee, I'm not comfortable-- town meeting is for town items that are on the warrant. So I'm very comfortable if you want to pass out your handouts right outside the door, as the other groups do. So that's how I would vote.
Keep in mind that town meeting isn't until May 1st.
Yes.
And a lot of time will pass before then. You might get better results and faster to put that information on a placard and stand in front of the flagpole with it on Saturday mornings.
Oh, we're definitely spreading the word around town in other ways. You're going to start to see the town painted yellow and blue.
I already saw one.
I'm out delivering yard signs every day. Can I ask one follow-up question? I understand everything that you guys have been saying. Since you have made the proclamation, is there any possibility of having, I'm not sure, a statement of that proclamation at town meeting? Or handouts of just the statement, since it's now a select board proclamation? Something that does not include the fundraising aspect, or Amazon, or even UkraineForward.org, but a copy of the proclamation?
Right. I think the moderator is pretty clear that, you know, things that are in the warrant are for our table. And when you think about it, the voters come in, we have 49 articles, there's a huge pile of handouts to read. Frankly, I really think you'll get better, people paying more attention when it's not on a cluttered table with all that other stuff, and it's just out there by itself. So I would not be inclined to request the moderator put it on the table. Is there further discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion this time? Okay, seeing none, but thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for taking this up tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for your support.
And thank you for the proclamation. We're very grateful.
Thank you very much.
Will we get out of the way? Pass that through?
Yes, indeed.
We are next going to move on to endorse the Historic Commission Letter concerning Battle Road. So I see we have Melissa and Nancy here. Is anyone else, if you want to come up, and is there anybody else here who's here to discuss the Battle Road? So we talked about this last week, and the only thing I was confused about was, it looks like you have written a beautiful letter, and whether you want the Select Board to write our own letter, sign on to your letter, or what exactly you're looking for from us.
Is it possible you can simply sign on and endorse the letter, so that we can say that officially at the Selectman's meeting on April 4th, that you voted to support our letters or our position? Then we can, you know, I'm prepared tomorrow to send out an email to the folks at the Federal Highways and Mass Part and Transportation that you have done so. And then I have some follow-up questions for them, but it would help us.
Okay, it's certainly possible. I just wanted to get clear what you were asking us to do.
It's very simple.
Seems simpler.
Great. Okay, great. Any discussion?
I heartily support it.
I agree.
I'll use that.
All right, Dewey?
That was a great letter.
It was really, really good letter. Thank you, Nancy.
I'd like to take all the credit, but--
Not strong enough.
Don't you come to the next meeting.
You know how hard it is to deal with these government people.
All right, do I have a motion, then?
Sure. Move to endorse the Historical Commission Letter as printed in the packet for this meeting.
March 28th, 2022.
Oh, dated, the letter dated March 28th, 2022, as printed in the packet for this meeting.
Checking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So do you want me to physically sign that letter?
I don't think that's necessary. I think we can just use--
Okay.
This will be official.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
If there's anything else you need, let us know. Thank you for all your efforts on this.
Thank you very much. We're not done. This is a perennial issue.
Okay, yep.
I'm sure you'll keep us posted.
All right. We are next going to have an update from our town clerk, Kari Tari, on the board and committee database. Welcome, Kari.
Thank you.
And just to remind the board what this is all about, we have many volunteers in town, we have 60-something committees, and it's very hard to track with the system that we've had in the past, who's volunteered, how long ago did they volunteer, which committees do they want to be on, who's on the committees now, when are their terms up? And so we've been working on a new system, and Kari is here to give us an update on that new system.
Yes, thank you. We're calling it an interim solution, because we had hoped for a web-based solution, which would have really been ideal, something that works with Civic Plus, and we believe that there was a module that could do this, and it turns out that it's under development. So we're going to wait a little while, but in the meantime, we need to make sure that our data is well-organized, that we can keep the webpages up to date with information, that we can keep you up to date with appointment information, and also when we have volunteers, and we have many volunteers, and the expiration terms and the length of terms, those are all things that we've somewhat lost track of, because we've been using a Microsoft Access database like a spreadsheet. And so that's the history. We're moving forward from that, and all the data isn't always entered accurately. Boards and committees are referred to in a lot of different ways, and so what we've done is we've partnered with a vendor who has worked with other town clerks in Massachusetts to, excuse me, to develop a database, and they have most of the pieces there, but we really want to refine them for what you want and what we want to have on the webpage. And so it's a Microsoft Access database, but the vendor is there. The vendor is working with us, is creating the reports that we need, and we are scrubbing the data. We're making sure that the committees have the same reference information. We're looking at the committee charges to make sure that we have the right terms. We're looking at the seats, so that we can make sure that we have staggered terms. And some of those things have just fallen off, and the way it happens so easily is when you have a vacancy, and you don't realize that it's not a three-year vacancy, it's a two-year vacancy, then things just are out of balance. So the way we're going to do this is the Robin in the Select Board office, in your office, takes in the volunteer information. So she is updating that information in the database and forwarding the appointment information to the nomination and appointment information. And then once a member is appointed, the town clerk's office gets the information. We send out the appointment letter, notifying them that you've appointed them, and letting them know that they now need to take the oath of office. And when they come in, then we also give them the committee handbook and a memo that tells them what acknowledgements and online training they need to do. So it just made sense that where people are coming in, they're coming to the Select Board office to express their interest in serving on a committee, or they're doing it electronically, but once they've been appointed, it becomes a part of our routine to make sure that we can track the information, so that everyone has a chance to comply.
Okay, thank you. So I have some questions. So are you, did you say that this is up and running now or not yet?
It is, it's up and running now, and now we're just working with the data.
Okay, so let's say, what is, so there are a number of people who have applied in the past six months. We have on the back of our agenda-- borrow your agenda for a second. Yes, a number of vacancies that we list on every agenda. So for all of those volunteer cards, which we call green cards, are you saying that Robin is now taking in that information?
That information has always been entered from the Select Board office. So it's being entered, it's how we extract the data, so that we can have a report that combines what's your first interest, second interest, and third interest.
Great, that's where I'm getting to. So that report, can that be circulated to the Select Board and to the committee chairs? Because they are really asking for this.
Yes.
They are looking to fill their vacancies, and they desperately need that report.
Is there actually a report needed, or is it accessible for search, for searching?
It is. Right now, because it's an access database, it's not something that we can share easily or at all. We can share reports, we can--
So we must ask and then receive.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, how about in the next few months, can we get, let's say, a weekly or at least a monthly report? Because I've had a number of inquiries for these vacancies, people who've applied as far back as September, that the chairs have not, they don't know these people have applied.
So, Teri, I hear your point, and--
Yeah, it's a source of anxiety.
For all of us. It's been a problem all year. So I'm wondering if it might be helpful if we got that report first, just to see the status of it. And the reason I'm asking that is, at one point when we talked about this in the past, asking that is, at one point when we talked about this in the past, we, we had some interview assignments, and when we followed through with those with potential candidates, in some cases, in the course of that conversation, the candidate, the person, volunteer applicant, would have either changed their mind about the committees that they listed, or in fact, in the course of the conversation, we realized that they would be a terrific match for X Committee. And that information was fed to the town manager's office with the idea that it was going to go on some kind of spreadsheet, and then also activate a system where if I had recommended somebody now for the Board of Health, for example, that that card would have gotten sent out to the chair and the liaison. So we knew that there was some activity there. And so...
Right, but that's a very good example. That committee chair, does it not, I didn't even know, there was five people who had volunteered for two vacancies, but they didn't know that. So I think we could do it the way Linda's suggesting, if you want. I think the thing is, we need to get that report out as soon as possible, if there's any way to get it out soon to us, and then also maybe a week later or two weeks later to the committee's chairs.
I don't know how it got there, but I know at one time, there was, the records had some narrative information that was provided by the, by the people who were filling out the form. And it would, it would have said more about them if they chose to say it than just their first, second, and third choice. Because when you're making those choices, you'd like to know something about them, what their qualifications were, what they did, you know, what skills they had. And some people are actually willing to tell you things like that.
And we can capture that information.
Although what it turns out is, the more qualified they are, the less they care to say about it. So, but anyway, it would be good to do whatever would help in stimulating greater exposition on the part of the candidates instead of bare bones set of choices. And that would be helpful in determining that somebody who had applied to be on the Natural Resources Commission, but really had a love of pavement or something like that, really ought to go with the public works. And when you're looking for them, we might want to make the choices for them.
And we really appreciate you working on this. This is something that's been broken, and we really appreciate you helping to get it fixed.
Well, it's a great team effort with the town manager's and the Select Board Office.
Right.
Yes.
Another thing that actually might be helpful is, along the same lines, I've been begging for this for a long time, is to have a compilation of the charges, the current charges to all the committees. Because many of us have no longer remember what these committees were supposed to do. And, you know, and what is on the town website is kind of haphazard in that regard.
Right. And related to that, well, Kari, you mentioned that this system will help keep the webpages up to date. What did you mean by that?
It will help us keep the webpages up to date. When, when there is a web interface, that will be automatic. It's not there yet.
Oh, okay.
So we are, we will manually be entering it. But, but having, working more closely with the data will allow it to be in our minds more and allow us to get it there.
But I guess, so you'll be manually entering the new, the new committee members and their term dates? Is that what you're saying?
On the webpages?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The other, that would be a huge help. The other thing would be, do you have the committee charge for each committee be on its webpage? And some of the committees don't have any webpages right now. And I know you're not in charge of all of this, but I'm just, since you brought it up, I'm just saying, we have a few broken links in here. For example, I was at the chair's breakfast recently, and I was at a coffee recently. And a lot of times we're saying, wow, you guys are a talented group. Why don't some of you apply? And the first question I get is, what can I apply for? What do these committees do? Where do I find out about it? We need to have that available because we do have a lot of talented people, and we don't want to lose them.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Thanks.
Yes.
Great. Matt, did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, I mean, it does look like Civic Plus has some other tools, this like low-code environment, Civic Optimize. And, you know, I don't know if you looked at all that stuff.
Well, we looked at Civic Clerk, and we had a sales team do a Zoom presentation for us. And it became very clear that they did not actually have the product working yet. So we thought, okay, we need something now. So we're eager for that to be done. But it was clear to us that it wasn't there.
Since I've spent 35 years working for software companies, I empathize.
So we really appreciate you and everyone else taking the initiative to help fix this. I think we really owe it to our volunteers to give them the information and let them come forward. So does anyone else have any questions, comments?
You do a terrific job. You really do.
Okay, thank you, Kari. Okay, we are going to move on to our town meeting items. So the way that I've put this together on the agenda is, first I've put on the ones that I think will be very short, and then we're going to do the Community Preservation Committee, which we haven't had a chance to do that, do yet. Then we're going to go back to some articles that we started before and haven't finished. There will be time for public comment at various points. And I want to remind the board that for each article, we have three choices tonight. We can recommend affirmative action, we can recommend no action, or we can recommend that we're going to report a town meeting. That will appear in the Finance Committee book, and then we will keep discussing our position over the next few weeks. And we will have to take a position by May 1st.
Do we actually need a vote to report a town meeting, or we just simply don't vote?
I guess we simply don't, we can simply decide, yeah, we don't have to vote that. But those are our three choices: affirmative action, no action, or report a town meeting.
Sure.
So, starting with Article 18, I am going to recommend that we report a town meeting. And the reason is that the Finance Committee has a guideline. The school committee, right now, is $312,000 above the guideline. They have not agreed, and they are meeting to discuss it on April 7. And I suggest that we wait until that discussion happens before we try to chime in on that. But if anyone disagrees, please speak up now.
I think that sounds reasonable.
Yep.
As long as there actually are discussions. I had heard that perhaps there weren't discussions planned.
Right, but there is a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, and that is the main topic of the meeting.
Well, if there are no discussions, then there is no change.
Well, then there would be a reason to have a vote.
We know what our recommendation would be.
Right.
Well, no, if that happens, then we still need, we, after this, this meeting, we're going to have to discuss what our position is, whether, you know, if they agree, then we'll discuss it. If they don't agree, we'll discuss it. We have to have a position, but we don't have one right now.
And if we're delayed in stating our position, it may or may not make the FinCom book.
Well, it won't. Anything, the FinCom book deadline is the 6th. So anything we don't do tonight, the FinCom book will say, report a town meeting. Okay. Article 31, I think should be pretty quick.
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything they want to discuss about Article 31, additional dwelling unit? It is on the consent calendar, I believe.
So I seem to recall that was revised, right? Or was the wording revised?
No, I think that's...
They determined they didn't need to revise the wording?
That's 32 and 35.
The additional dwelling unit, where they grandfathered the units?
Madam Chair, I can help with that. This is the moderator. Yes, we did revise the language of that to address the potential problem of opening the door too wide there. And the language now, I'm just looking for it so I can read it to you. Basically, we just made it clear that the intent is that there will be an exception for, for ADUs that were permitted and recorded prior to the date when the dimensional changes were made, so, which might not qualify under the current dimensions in the bylaw, so long as the unit complies with the previously recorded ADU. So in other words, it can't be made any bigger. And I'm still just looking for the language. Apologies, I will...
Carmen, this is Elizabeth, if you'd like me to read it.
Oh, thank you, Elizabeth.
No problem. The motion will be amended to be, Ms. Ferguson moves that the town take affirmative action on Article 31 as printed in the warrant, adding the sentence at the end, provided that the additional, oh, hang on one second. Oh, I'm, see, I'm reading the wrong one, too, now.
Yep, all right.
No, no, I, I have it. Hang on two seconds. It is with the added sentence, and I have my handout. And the planning board will be reviewing this tomorrow night with the added sentence, provided that the dimensions of the additional dwelling unit conform to the dimensional requirements in the recorded special permit.
There we go.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth.
You're welcome.
Are there questions or discussion from the Select Board on this article? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
A move to recommend affirmative action on Article 31 as amended and presented in this meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will go on to Article 34. Are there Select Board questions or discussion on Article 34? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a motion on Article 34.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 34 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Article 34 passes affirmative action. And then we have Article 35. Is Karen Judanas with us?
Yes, I am. I'm on the phone.
Okay, thank you, Karen. I see in our packet that we have a few updated slides. I only included in the packet the slides that were updated. So I think you've updated these in, in order to answer the questions that were raised at the public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on the Select Board concerning Article 35?
Yes, has the planning board deliberated on this article?
I am not aware that they have.
Okay. Carmen, can you remind me, is this article on the consent calendar?
It is not, Madam Chair. And the planning board does need to give it a hearing. Well, it was heard at the hearings, was it not?
It was heard at the hearing. That's why I was curious whether the planning board had expressed their views.
Right, yeah. As long as the planning board has had a hearing on it, but they do have to make a report to town meeting expressing their view. I'm sure Elizabeth can tell us what the plan is there.
The planning board will be taking up all of the articles they're required to make a recommendation to at their meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
They should make their recommendations before we do?
Well, I'm prepared to make a recommendation for, I mean, but I also understand if the rest of the board would like to defer. That would be our usual process.
I think there were a few others that we were prepared to vote on, then we decided to wait until the, the board in question made its decision. So...
That's fine with me.
Do you, do you guys want to report a town meeting then? Or does anyone want to make a motion for that?
Particularly on this one, I would like to hear the planning board's deliberation.
Okay, let's do that.
Let's do that. So Article 35 will say, report a town meeting, as will Article 18. Okay, now we are on to Article 26, Community Preservation Committee. And Diane Proctor, if you would like to come up, and anybody else who is involved in, what I'm going to do for this Article 26, I am going to call through each letter. It's divided into sections from A through K. And I'm going to see if we have any questions. For example, does anyone have any questions for A, Regional Housing Services Office? Okay, how about B, Conquered Home for the Aged? C, Trustees of Reservations Old Mans? D, Wright Tavern Legacy? E, Conquered Free Public Library Oral History Preservation Project?
I would just say that I'm especially enthusiastic about that one.
Okay.
I am as well.
Have they taken your oral history yet?
No, I don't think I qualify.
But we'll get yours, Henry.
You might.
I've already done.
You might qualify, Henry. Okay.
Just by seniority.
No, not just by seniority, but, okay, Asabit River Bluff, I have some questions on that one. So let's hold on that one. G, Junction Village Open Space. H, Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. I have a question on that one. Okay, I, Asabit River Pedestrian Bridge. Okay, I have a question on that one. And J, Recreation Facility Strategic Plan. K, Staff and Technical Support. So, board members, no one has questions on any of these items, except me, is that...
Well, I mean, I've expressed opinions and had questions at the hearing, so I feel like those have been, you know, discussed, except for F.
Okay, let's take a brief question on H and I then. My question on the H, Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, what will happen if this is not funded?
I presume if this, Diane Proctor, 57, Sudbury Road, Chair of the CPC, I presume if this were not to be funded, that what would happen is that we would just not have the kind of safety precautions that they hope to establish on that trail.
Okay.
That's what it's for, for safety?
It's mostly for safety. I mean, it's, yes.
Madam Chair, this is Marsha Rasmussen.
I'm sorry.
Any particular locations?
Marsha, do you have the...
Marsha?
No, it wasn't just for safety.
It wasn't just for safety.
I'm sorry. This is a small amount of money. It's $30,000 that we are seeking for any additional landscaping, for benches, for some signage. One of the projects that has been identified is the, a connection to the prison cemetery, the Department of Corrections Prison Cemetery. And so we're planning to do an interpretive panel and hiring the consultant to help us with that design and so forth. So this small amount of funding is anticipated to provide some amenities along the rail trail that are currently not available.
Okay.
Which I understood in their presentation to enhance the safety for people, benches and things for people walking the trail and spending time there.
All right.
Thank you, Marsha. Thank you, Marsha.
And another question that maybe Marsha can answer, or perhaps someone else, on I, the pedestrian bridge, we brought up at a previous select board meeting that we're really in favor of this project, but the cost keeps going up. And has any, has anyone approached the businesses in West Concord or on Baker Ave to see if possibly they would donate toward this effort?
Marsha has to take that question.
And I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Hughes, who has been the project lead on this aspect.
Okay, Elizabeth.
Thank you. So, for this design phase, and the permitting and the engineering, we have not approached businesses at this point. There will definitely have to be some, you know, major fundraising and approaching businesses for the construction side of things. Working to get the project onto the State Transportation Improvement Program, similar to how the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail was funded. But there will be town match required under that, as well as, as you're seeing with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, there may be certain enhancements that won't be funded through the State Transportation Improvement Program through Mass DOT. The cost side of things, because we want to get this on the State Transportation Improvement Program, and having to go through the whole Mass DOT design and permitting, when this does go to construction, it will have to be under a prevailing wage and public bid, which adds approximately 40% to the cost of the project. So, it's not necessarily the cost of this project is going up solely because of the bridge we're building, but because of the process we're going through, and the requirements of the state and the funding and public bid process and prevailing wage requirements for any use of federal and state funds.
So, if I heard you right, Elizabeth, you're saying that on the, in the TIP DOT program, even if we were successful, we would be required to have a town match for that? And the businesses might contribute toward that town match? Is that what you're saying?
Definitely.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, what I think we should do is...
Madam Chairman, I believe this is a project that's been, just for people who don't know, this project has been on the planning books for at least five years.
Yes, it's a wonderful project.
Yes.
Yes.
It really connects West Concord with an important service center in Concord.
Right. Okay, so before we get on to Asbit River Bluff, which I think there might be quite a bit of discussion, I just want to see, are there any more questions from the people in the room here or on Zoom about any other item on the Community Preservation Committee, Article 26? Okay, I don't see any questions. All right. So, what is the pleasure of the board? Do you want to take position on Article 26 now, or do you want to discuss the Asbit River Article 25 and then take position on this one? Which way do you guys want to do it?
I think that the only issue we had was not the expenditure of the money or the project itself, but the amount of housing that would be provided on it.
Right.
And that's probably not in the control of the community preservation people.
Okay.
That's a matter of the, whatever the, our housing entity is going to be, they fund it.
All right.
So, I actually would like to be able to agree, and I'm not sure whether I can. So, what, why, I have actually proposed a approach, you know, that would, you know, get my vote, which would be to increase the number of housing units, and perhaps increase a little bit the allocation of land. I had originally proposed moving from an acre to an acre and a half. I think even an acre and a quarter would be sufficient if you were just going to add a duplex and a triplex to get a total of seven units. But I wondered whether the allocation of funds between open space and community housing would need to be adjusted to reflect that greater allocation of land. I don't know that that's really necessary. I think that the MOU can decide how much, many dollars it takes to pay for whatever parcel plus the duplex it takes. So, you know, either we consider affordable housing to be a use that, you know, gets a subsidized value of the land, or we just increase the allocation to community housing of the $1 million, but still leave it at $1 million. You know, it, we could just say, okay, more of the money is going towards community housing, so therefore, you know, but it doesn't really matter. It's all the same money going to the same project.
I think it's...
What really matters is the memorandum of understanding, and what it says about how much of the land goes to community housing, and how many units should be provided on that plot. And of course, no additional units have been funded to go on that plot, so we don't, you know, actually, we're not even looking at affordable housing as it stands, but rather land.
We have an abstract promise.
I think it's more, it's kind of like tax accounting. It has very little to do with reality.
Well, I don't know. It may, it has something to do with reality.
All right, Linda, and then Diane.
I do believe though that Stuart Saginaw, I mean, just to respond, Stuart Saginaw, who is the one who manages the CPC on a state level, I believe we've been informed, and I can check this again, but my understanding from him is that we need to present to the town a very bright and clear line as to where that division would take place on a map.
Absolutely, and so the MOU reflects that, right? So, that is a clear document that describes those terms.
And that has very little to do with how we parcel up the money, I wouldn't think.
Okay, Linda?
I mean, we could allocate all of the money for conservation and then still build housing on part of it.
Okay, I think Linda is our liaison.
So, I was just going to suggest, it sounds like we've already moved into the need to talk about Article 26 before we...
No, 25.
25.
25, sorry. And then we'll go back and take, right, right. Do you have any comments about, you know, you've observed all the CPC meetings and...
So, you know, I'm certainly sympathetic with Matt in terms of always trying to maximize the number of affordable housing units that we can benefit from on the limited opportunities that the town has to address that. In this case, however, we have had multiple and multiple entities debating this over a long period of time, and all of the integral pieces have had to work together to come to the point where we are with this agreement. And a lot of thought has gone into this. There have been a lot of cross-conversations between different groups. And I think we just received a summary outline just before the meeting started, that tries to capture all of that as clearly and as plainly as possible, as well as to address some of the questions as well as concerns that have come up. So, I think originally, we were talking about more housing, affordable housing units on that property. And again, over the course of multiple conversations, we tried to compromise and come to a place where we could meet needs across the board. And in this case, you know, I think this is, we're setting new territory here in many ways, in terms of trying to meet dual town goals, both for open space and for housing, as well as bring together multiple sources of funding, and obviously conversations with the neighborhood and others who are going to be, and there's some unique fundraising that's going on to also contribute to this. So, again, I'm sympathetic to the trying to always find opportunity for...
But since all the money is coming from the same place, that is, the whole $1 million is coming from the CPA, with CPA money, how it's...
That's not correct. That, I'm glad you brought that up.
But that's all we're talking about now, is the CPA allocation.
Well, actually, I agree with Linda. I think, I think we're going to go back to the CPC allocation in a minute. We're now talking about Article 25 itself. Sorry about the confusion. So, I would like to clarify some of the numbers, because I'm a little bit confused. I see that 1 million is proposed to come from the CPC.
Yes.
And we can talk about how it's allocated. I see you have an allocation in here, and maybe we'll propose a change, I don't know. But what I don't understand is, how much is coming from the town and how much from the fundraising groups? Because I'm looking at the MOU, and I'm not coming up with the, I'm a little confused looking at the numbers.
Thank you, Chair. I think there are people here in the audience who can speak to that.
Right, who would like to answer that?
So...
Is that Lee Smith? Hi, Lee, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Lee Smith, 1836 Main Street, I'm the Chair of the CHDC.
Thank you. So, let me see if I have this right. It looks to me like the...
Go ahead.
It looks to me, from the MOU, and it stopped me when I get it wrong, the CPC would give 700,000 for the open space, and then the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust would give 650,000 for housing, and the CPC another 300,000 for housing. Is that correct?
Sounds right.
Okay, because when I add those three numbers, I'm getting 1,650,000. And I had heard that it was 1 million total, so I was just trying to, so it's 1 million from CPC and 650,000 besides that. And then if we get a grant, it would reduce our contribution. No? Okay.
So...
Sorry, just trying to understand this here.
As you can see, there's a lot of moving pieces, there's a lot of entities who are helping fund the acquisition of this project. In addition, we've got $50,000 pledged from the Concord Housing Foundation, so that's another source of funds. But as to the 500, I believe it's presented as a contingent request. Grants have been applied for, and if those come in at full funding, then that would reduce the amount that we are looking from the town.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Okay, but I had forgotten about the Housing Foundation, thank you. Okay?
And if I could just add, in addition to all that, the open space and conservation groups are well on their way to privately coming up with 1.2 million dollars for the acquisition. And I believe, as of today, they're in the range of 800,000 dollars already pledged.
Right, the brochures are beautiful, yes.
It's fantastic.
Okay, and then another, oh, Krista, did you want to add something?
Thanks. Krista Collins, 55 Highland Street, and Land Protection Director for Sudbury Valley.
Can you just, yeah.
Do you want me to say that again? Thank you. So, I just wanted to make clear that the grant is strictly for the open space portion of the purchase, so that, and because it's a reimbursable grant, the town has to allocate 100% of the funds and spend 100% of the funds to show the state that they canceled check and then be reimbursed through the grant.
Thank you. So, another number that I'm confused about, because we don't have a number yet, is the cost per unit. And I know that we don't know any of that yet, but what I'm frustrated by honestly is, there should be some way to do an estimate. Can we get any kind of a ballpark estimate so that we have an idea for the voters before they vote?
Unfortunately not. What needs to be understood about this project is we, it's taken us approximately six months just to get to this point where we've just signed a purchase and sale agreement just a few weeks ago. So, if we're successful at town meeting and we're able to acquire the property, including the fundraising, then we would then embark on the planning and development exercise where we would take the time we need to figure out what's the best part of the site to use, where does the septic need to go, what does the masting look like, is it a single family and a duplex, is it modular construction, is it Habitat for Humanity, is it a private nonprofit developer? All things that we just haven't gotten to yet, just because of the time constraints associated with this project, which I'll add is primarily driven by the fact that this property is privately owned and was poised to go on sale to the open market.
Right.
And the owners very generously offered it to the town first. And we've been, they've been extremely patient with us to get to this point, and then agreeing to wait until after town meeting to determine whether we can move forward, and if not, the deposit funds are going to be returned to those who contributed to them. So, there just hasn't been enough time to create a viable development project to even...
All right, I'm not asking for that, right, I understand that, but I guess...
What the money looks like.
Do you have, for example, an estimate based on, I'm not going to remember the exact number, 940 Main Street, something like that, where the Habitat is building now? Is there, you know, a cost per square foot that they're using that we could just use as an estimate? Is there anything like that?
Does anyone know that? Cost per square foot? No. That's, that, that project is being developed by Habitat for Humanity.
Right.
CHDC acquired that land with the house from...
Sorry, it's so crowded in here.
Let me get up, Liz, why don't you sit over here? Liz, I'm on my agenda.
So, hi, I'm Liz Rust, 201 Commonwealth Avenue. The different models that Lee mentioned are very different in terms of cost. The Habitat model, the town basically paid just for the sewer connection, and Habitat really picked up all those other costs, and most of it's volunteer labor.
Right.
They have some costs. Modular would be a whole different subset, and then just regular stick build. So, any of the even ballpark numbers would just be so different that you really need to go through the more planning process to get at what you're looking at.
Okay, it makes it very difficult for voters.
If I could just add on to that, you know, we're also talking about a development project that probably won't start within less than two years, just to pick a number. So, any number that we might throw out today, especially in the extremely high cost of construction as we know it today, can't necessarily be relied upon for a project two years down the road, so...
Okay. And my last question is maybe for Delia, if she's, oh, Delia's here, hi. Do the trails, just to make it real difficult down there, right? Sorry about that. Do the trails actually connect to existing town trails? Or do we have a plan for them to connect?
Thank you, Delia Kay, Natural Resources Director. There are existing trails on the property. There is one that has, the sort of main loop trail does have three entrances that come off the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And the goal is to have an ADA compliant loop trail that comes off to, ideally two points of the Bruce Freeman, to provide that ADA compliant loop trail. So, yes, right now, I mean, those trails are on private property, the property owners have allowed the townspeople to use those trails. Those will all go away if the town is not able to work with this partnership of housing and land trust to acquire the land.
What about from Pine Street? Would it be able to connect over there?
So, there's the possibility of connections, but those would entail agreements with private property owners.
Okay. Okay, all right, other questions from board members on Article 25?
I had a question, which was, with the grant for the open space, if that grant comes through, what happens to the funds?
To the grant funds?
Yeah. Do they just go back to open space funds for future CPC grants? I mean, clearly, we've allocated all the funds at town meeting if we go forward with this. So, the grant would then refund some of that, but that... would then refund some of that, but that, we've already spent the money, if you will.
So the monies would be, the monies that are being requested from CPA funds would be allocated. If the grant was obtained, that would release the burden on the town borrowing. So those funds, we would pay, as Krista said, it's a reimbursable grant, so we have to have the money to pay the seller in July. When the town is reimbursed, that money would go back into the town account.
Right. But again, so we have a CPC allocation, grand total of, you know, 1.8 mil. Okay. So now it sounds like we'd get a $500,000 refund against our 1.8 mil. I assume that 500,000 would then be back in the open space account, just as we already had an open space prior year fund balance for future fund years for CPC. Or does it go somewhere else?
Teri, do you want to take that?
So my understanding is that the grants and the donations from private property owners, that's in the same category. That's 1.2 million dollars. So if the grant is received, it reduces the need for private donations.
Oh. Oh, that's different.
Right?
So that means that private donors would net only put up 700,000.
Yeah, that's not...
Okay.
It's very complicated because essentially with the private fundraising, we're hedging our bets. So yes, there needs to be between the grant and the private fundraising, a total of 1.2 million. We're... I don't want to steal Polly's thunder. Polly, how much have we raised, Polly?
Okay. As of today, we've raised 897,000 from incredibly generous people who support this project. So that's a really important thing to keep in mind.
Wow.
So if we, now if we rate, if we, let's say we stop at 900,000, and then we get the $500,000 grant, we'll have exceeded the 1.2 million. So some of that excess could would... So there's the 500,000 that has to be fronted from bonding. So that would go away. And then there would be an excess of a couple hundred thousand dollars that we could decide to put in a permanent stewardship endowment for the property. We could put it towards creating the all persons trail, or conceivably, it could reimburse some of the community preservation funds.
Okay. So that hasn't been decided. So I thought the grant would reimburse the 1.65 million that the town was putting in.
The town.
But that's not correct. Okay. It might reimburse part of it, but none of it's been decided. It's...
The maximum that the town would have, if we didn't raise another dollar now, the maximum that would come from the town would be 900,000. 700 from the CPA and a $200 gap that would have to come from the bonding. And this is...
For the open space.
For the open space. For the open space. This is for the open space.
Right. All right. Well, anyway, I suggest that, you know, when this goes to town meeting, that there be some kind of one-page chart that... Because I tried to sort through all this, and I'm still not totally...
And we do expect that we'll hear about one of the grants by town meeting. So that's going to make it a lot easier to talk about. So...
Right. Okay. Teri, did you want to add anything?
I'm just wondering, there is a chart on page three of the handout that we received.
Which handout?
The one that came at 5:59 PM.
Right. Right. That's part of the one that...
And I'm assuming this is an accurate chart because we just received it.
But it doesn't show the grant.
It doesn't show the reimbursed grant.
That's the problem.
It does. On the last row, it says land campaign donations and grants.
Okay.
So the reason for that is because when we put this table together, and it is still accurate, we don't know what the fundraising is going to...
Sure.
Where that's going to land. But, you know, we had to put in the land and water conservation fund application in January. That was put in for $500,000, as well as the borrowing article for 25. That's also for 500,000. If we don't get the grant, or even if we do, we still need to pay the seller all the money that, you know, the 2.8 million that is the acquisition cost. And that unknown will continue to be what the fundraising amount is.
Right. I understand this page finally now. Yeah. Okay. Linda?
I understand the numbers as described. I guess the only thing that I do have a question about is the answer about should your fundraising goal be met or be just under? And in the meantime, the town appropriated at town meeting the 500 K. It's been fronted to complete the purchase. It seems to me that any, if the town had any money that's not reversed, reimbursed, that was raised, should be returned to the town from that 500,000 that was allocated by the town, not to CPC, that I heard somebody say. I mean, that seems to be...
Yeah. The 500... And then if there was anything beyond that, it could go back to CPC. Because if we got the grant right now, we would have a surplus, even beyond the 500,000.
But I think we understand that we have to describe the surplus scenario and where that money goes in that event. I think when we put this together, we were hoping to hit the goals, but now it seems like maybe we're going to surpass some of the goals. And so that's a different problem set. Yes.
That's really excellent. Right. I thought a minute ago, you said, well, maybe we'll do some trial development or some sewage. So that would be a question, whether you'd do that or you'd send the money back to the town or whatever. So yeah, that question will come up.
Thank you.
But some clarity about the first amount of overage, once the frontage money is reimbursed, should clearly go to the town for the 500 appropriation in the warrant. And if that's clear, then you don't want to muddy the waters beyond that, I guess.
And I think we've tried to say that in the description of Article 25, where it talks about, I think the last sentence of that description of the article says that the town has partnered with CLCT and SVT to raise the additional funding needed to complete the purchase of the conservation land, and the $500,000 of debt service may be reduced to the extent that private fundraising exceeds its goal. That was the intention of that. And we can clarify that a little bit better because I don't think that that point is getting across clearly.
Right. I think that's why I got confused, that I thought if the grant came in, the whole 500,000 would go back to the town. I didn't understand it was combined with the fundraising in this chart. So yeah, okay. Great. Good to have the conversation.
And some of that confusion comes because of where the, how the numbers were described in the original MOU that was executed. So you may want to go back and look at the MOU. I don't know. It's just in terms of how those numbers are described and allocated.
Excellent.
That's where some of the confusion is coming from.
Right. But excellent fundraising job. A good problem to have, right? Additional questions from board members?
Well, I guess I could now just describe my position and why I came to it. So first of all, in November 22nd, the minutes that we, executive session minutes that we just made public, you know, we were presented with this opportunity. And as it was described at that time, you know, there was this cooperative option of preserving open space for the majority of the parcel, and then developing affordable housing. And we looked at, you know, pro forma examples of, you know, 11 units, for example, and also looked at the yield options for subdivision, as well as for PRD options. And, you know, I think that the opportunity looked interesting at that time, even though it did seem right from the beginning that the funds to actually build the affordable housing just weren't readily available. And so I think we, at that time, authorized a 5% deposit so that some work could be done to come up with an agreement. So then, when the agreement came out, I think in January, I think ever since then, anytime, you know, that we have had a chance to discuss it, I mean, I was extremely disappointed from the very beginning that it was just five units that were envisaged under that memorandum, memorandum of understanding. And I don't believe that the Select Board has really been a party to the negotiation of those terms. And, you know, maybe that's appropriate. But what I can say is that this is an exceptional site for housing, as we noted at that time. It, of course, also has tremendous open space opportunities, but those are, I think, you know, more than amply provided for in the proposal that is done here. But meanwhile, you know, we have a housing crisis in Massachusetts. And while we've had tremendous efforts from many groups, including many people in this room, to increase our affordable housing, we really have not succeeded. In fact, you know, it's somewhat ironic, but in the memo, it does point out, we're at a risk of a 40B development right now. And that's because we don't necessarily, we're not 100% sure yet, have our 10% of affordable housing. And again, that's in spite of a lot of efforts. And we also have in front of us the MBTA communities legislation that was passed at the state level, which more or less, even though we have many problems with it, should be a loud and clear message to us that we are not creating enough affordable housing, that this is, you know, talking to communities like us, that we're not solving, helping to solve the problem. So when we have this prime site, and we have the opportunity to create, you know, some number of affordable housing units, and it's a great opportunity, and we only come back with three net new units and just the conversion of the existing building, to me, it's not enough. And while, again, I applaud the efforts, the fundraising efforts, the open space provision, we're great at raising money for open space. We need more money and more will for affordable housing. And this is a lost opportunity if we forestall the chance to get, and again, I just proposed a modest number, seven units as opposed to five. It's a tiny number, but as you know, every single unit is a fight. And this is our chance. So, you know, how about traffic? Well, you know, I don't have the ITE trip generation model in front of me, but we're talking about like a car per half hour. Okay? And, you know, and I'm talking about, you know, one that goes towards Upland and maybe another that goes towards Marlboro Road. Is this a problem? How about neighbors' impacts? We've got the Bruce Freeman Trail on one side, woods on the other where Upland is, woods on the back where the river is. There are very few developments that could impact the neighborhood less than this parcel. And then thirdly, you know, the kinds of units, right? So if we put literally just one duplex and one triplex on the site in addition to the existing duplex, they look very similar to the units that are just across the street up the hill. Okay? And it's not out of character. So I guess, you know, I just can't, with the way that it's currently supported, in spite of everyone's efforts, and I do appreciate so much everything that people have done, we just have to not take the, and again, I don't want to say it's an easy way out. It's certainly not easy. But we have to work even harder. And I guess that's why I would just ask for everyone that they think of the generosity of their spirit. It doesn't cost a dollar more. It's really providing the opportunity. And if we can all just rally and allow that to happen, rather than falling back into our habits, we may make some progress here. So that's my view.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Well, and I'm not sure that, I mean, I agree with you on the basic point, but I don't think that we need to decide that in order to approve this appropriation.
Well, if the MOU would be modified, certainly, nothing would have to change in what we have in the warrant.
But it could be modified between now and the time that anything is...
But I don't see any motive or, you know, pressure to make a change in it unless we say something. And again, even if we say something, it may not matter, you know?
They will need funding, and we will have some voice over the funding.
Well, and in fact, that's the other thing, as far as the cost. I mean, in the absence of a model, you know, we can just go, that the going rate right now is $400 a square foot. If you imagine that we're going to build a total of 5,000 built square feet, even if we do three incremental units, you know, it's $2 million of additional construction cost, plus the renovation costs for the duplex. So, you know, the town is putting forward 1.65 million, plus probably 2 million in the future.
But what makes affordable housing difficult to build has always been the cost of land or the value of it.
And yeah, and that's where I say, let's secure land, but let's secure an adequate number of units for that land.
You want to maximize the yield of the land.
Yes.
And I think we can work, I mean, I don't think we need to solve that problem now, but it's good to bring it up. And I think there's another thing this town, I want to think about doing with sites like this, is doing its own 40B projects the way we used to.
A friendly 40B. Well, if it comes to that, but I sure hope it doesn't.
Right.
Well, I don't think that's all that bad.
I mean, the state would like us to put 30, 40 units on this property.
40B doesn't mean 30 units.
Okay.
No. I mean, if you look at the MBTA Communities Act, and this is within a half mile of an MBTA station, 16 units an acre, right? Isn't that what they said?
Yeah.
So you've got, what, four buildable acres here? So we're talking 40-plus units. So seven is not a unreasonable number.
Yes, but we're never going to see that MBTA zoning here.
Okay. But I think what Matt...
It doesn't have teeth like 40B does now, but I bet you, if we don't get progress on this, we will see teeth.
We can talk about this out in the street.
Yeah. But I think, Henry, what Matt is saying is that this is the leverage time. The Select Board has to take a position on this article. And I think what Matt is saying is that this is our time to speak up, that we support the concept in general, but we'd like to get a few more units out of it if we can, or no, we support it as is. Because yes, if it changes, it'll change later, but this is the time when we have to speak up.
How would you change it? How would you change what's in front of us now?
Well, unfortunately, what's in front of us does not reveal the circumstances. Right? Because there's no reference to a number of units in Article 25, or of a division of land.
Does it reference the MOU? I think it might reference the MOU, right? Or doesn't it?
So, but changes could happen in the MOU without...
Well, that's what you're proposing, right?
That's right. But...
No, it doesn't reference the...
It doesn't.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, there's nothing here. So in other words, you don't have to change a word of Article 25 to do what I'm suggesting, nor do you necessarily, I mean, maybe it would be nice to change the allocations. It sounds like we don't want to have less than a $500,000 allocation for open space. We don't necessarily have to change the numbers in Article 26. You just decide in the MOU that that 300,000 plus this 500,000 gets you the land you need and to develop seven units.
I thought we were told when we were talking about the financing of the middle school that an MOU between town entities was unenforceable anyway.
Well, and actually, Teri pointed out, I believe, that the MOU, as it's written, says five units are currently envisaged, or something like this. It doesn't actually...
It says no more than five units.
Huh?
It says no more than five units, and all of our fundraising is based on that number. If this project changes, we, SVT and CLCT have zero integrity in this town because we...
Well, it's not you that's suggesting this change. It's us. You know, you're not the ones changing the deal.
What happens to the donations?
And we're not changing the deal either. We're making a request. But, you know, or at least I'm making. I don't, I don't know if my board members agree with me, but...
Actually, yes. The MOU says it is presently contemplated...
Yeah.
...that there would be five affordable housing units.
Right.
So that could mean maybe we'll have more, maybe we'll have less. I know, I know you are really thinking five, but...
I don't think that we should negotiate in bad faith, of course. I would like to see that changed, that be amended. It does have a clause at the end that it may be amended by mutual agreement.
I'm looking at page two, where it says parcel A, the first sentence. I'm, I'm looking at page two where it says parcel A, the first sentence, it is presently contemplated. And that's what gave me pause because as Lee said, we don't know yet. There's a lot that could happen in the next two years. We don't know who's going to bid on it. Matt said, you know, maybe we could have a duplex and a triplex. We don't know what's going to end up there. Maybe nobody will bid, maybe we can't afford it at all. I really have no idea. That's what makes this so difficult, all these unknowns. But when you have it, it is presently contemplated, it gives you the flexibility, I think, that you haven't told anything to the dony, donations in bad faith. You're just presently contemplating.
I'm, I'm, I apologize. That, that is not what we've told the donors. The donors understand that there will be five, no more than five units on this, because that's what everybody involved with this project agreed upon. And I don't see how we can, we can backtrack on that.
Okay. And the Affordable Housing Trust also said that their money, there needed to be five units in order for that money to be available.
Meaning there needed to be at least five units.
That's what needed to be made.
Five, five units. Yeah. Okay. Polly.
I'd love to add one thing if I might. We spent many months, my name's Polly Reeve and I'm at 429 Williams Road and I'm speaking on behalf of the Land Trust, Concord Land Conservation Trust. I just want to point out that this group of, of many partners, I mean, truly, you know, every housing group in town and land trusts spent months looking at this land and trying to figure out how, what, how can we optimize its benefit to the town in multiple ways? And working with the town planner, we looked at different scenarios that involve different numbers of houses, market rate, mixed use, all, all different kinds of things. And when we got to this one acre for affordable housing and six acres preserved as open space, something clicked and it, the, on the acre, I mean, what I understood was that five units was kind of the right amount. If you looked at the kind of housing people want to live in, if you look at the septic system needs, that that's what that acre could accommodate. And it was, it was a magic moment because we were not sure we were going to get to that point. It really was feeling kind of impossible to find that balance. We also then looked at the land value. If you assign value to buildable lots and, and understand that a certain amount of land was already protected by the riverfront and so on, it's, it started to feel like a number that might be attainable, that this was a feasible path that we were pursuing on both sides, on the land, the open space side and on the housing side. And I just don't want to, I, I want you to understand how much work went into getting to that point and getting to that acre and six acre. We need to go into the closing with an understanding of what land is going to be preserved and what land is going to be set aside for development. Those lines needed to be drawn on a map. They're not mushy, you know? And, and in order to go out and raise money, we need to tell people what is envisioned, envisioned there. So that's what I needed to emphasize to all of you.
If the open space component was reduced to 500,000 total between the existing reserve fund in this, in the CPC article, and the community housing was raised to 500,000 and then we allocated an additional quarter acre, wouldn't the open space per acre provision still work? Because now we have, you know, the, the open space is paying less for all but a quarter acre of what they had before, and the community housing is paying more. I mean, it's really just putting numbers in two different rows on the spreadsheet, but it, it, as far as if you're trying to say dollars per acre for open space, I think we can make that work. Even going to an acre and a quarter for, for community housing.
You'd have to draw a new plan and see what can actually fit in there, I think.
Yeah, it's just, you know, slice the slice a little further out, but, you know, that would give you more septic capacity, would support potentially seven units.
And we've secured wonderful commitments from people based on one plan with lines drawn on a map in a certain place.
I understand.
And it would be really difficult, I think, to go back and redraw those lines at this point.
But you didn't tell them you'd have to deal with us.
That's true.
Well, you don't necessarily-
I'm sorry, could I just also add that the, the warrant does specify the, the breakout of the one acre and the six acres as shown on parcels A and B. So that was defined for the warrant. It was defined for the community in terms of fundraising. It has also been presented to the Land and Water Conservation Fund. That is the proposal. We have had appraisals done on the property that are based on that division of land. And so to go and undo all of these things is supremely challenging at this stage in the game. I mean, we had to have these plans in order to get to where we are now, to have an article on the warrant, to have grant applications that were in front of the entities and agencies that need to be reviewing them. And I don't think it's realistic. I mean, from the fundraising level, I think Krista and Polly have made it very clear, these commitments have been made on, on what has been presented to the community. But I don't think you can either go and change it from the granting standpoint. Everything changes. And it's, it's, I think it will be very difficult to change that.
Okay. Thank you. Henry, do you want to add anything?
I think, I think we beat this one to death.
All right. All right. Linda, do you have anything else?
As I said before, a great deal has gone into this. There have been public hearings. The project has evolved from the original proposal that Marsha, when she met with us in November. And entities have weighed in and to the select board along the way as well, when Keith Bergman came in talking about this as well, I think in one of his presentations.
So you know how we started out when this project is we were asked, what, about six months ago to approve, I think it was 140,000?
140,000, 5%,
As, as the down payment against a-
Right. For 11 acres, for 11 units.
But a totally, totally refundable amount, but to tie up the property without, and then since that point, it's evolved without much involvement on our part. And maybe what they've come up with is, is, is a, is a good plan and a good compromise, but I think we've expressed the fact that there are other considerations that may not have been taken into account in their negotiations for the different, what do you call them, stakeholders? And so I think, and certainly nobody negotiated in bad faith. It's just, you know, it's kind of, when you all get through, there's somebody else who has a voice in the decision as well. So I think we should probably stay on top of this and see whether we can negotiate with the parties to get a result that might work better for the town after we get through this phase of it. I don't think we need to change a word of any of these warrant articles or the amounts that are set out in the CPA schedule.
Okay.
But everybody noticed that we're concerned.
All right. So are people prepared to vote now or does anyone want to make a motion now or do we want to wait until we have a full board to take our vote? What's your pleasure?
It's a silent, Stephanie.
It is.
Yeah, I wish Susan was here to also weigh in on this.
Yeah.
She started to at the last meeting and-
I agree. But maybe that gives us an excuse to have a pause and everybody reflect and we can, you know, report at town meeting and we can keep discussing it. I know that's not, there are many people who will not like that decision, but does anybody want to make a motion right now or? Okay, I, I think seeing none, we will report at town meeting then. Oh, yes.
Nancy Kerr, 25 Upland Road.
Oh, I guess you have to come up to the microphone. Sorry about that. No, sorry.
Well, I just feel like if we expect to have anything move, change between now and town meeting, we would need to make a statement now.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And so, but I, I wouldn't make a motion in the affirmative, but-
Okay. Okay. Yes. Please state your name.
Nancy Kerr, 25 Upland Road. I, I'm really disturbed that this, that this late date is now being questioned. I think that's really unfortunate. And I just, it seems to me that there's land for sale, or not land, but houses for sale all the time in Concord. I mean, buy another piece of land and make affordable housing there. I mean, why all of a sudden like, oh, we need to do it on this exact property? Their housing, you know, their, their mansionizations all over town. One of those houses, instead of being a mansion, could turn into affordable housing. You can jump on those properties. I just don't see why this has to be the one.
Okay.
And I, I don't think that the present duplex is considered affordable housing. So we are getting five. I mean, that's a lot. Five more than we have.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
I mean, I would say that this is not like a sudden change of heart on my part. We have had numerous occasions in our board meetings to, you know, go over this and I've expressed very consistent views on my part, and I know that others have expressed doubts as well. So it's not like we're suddenly foisting this on people. On the other hand, I realize that we also haven't had a direct seat at the table. So now it does seem sudden.
Right. I mean, if you had these feelings, you know, there have been countless meetings and public meetings that could have been expressed and could have gone into the mix in the past six or eight months.
We've been, I mean, our select board meetings are all public.
Well, so are ours.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mike, are you? Okay. And then after Mike, we have Frank Feely on Zoom and then another-
Frank Feely in the audience.
Can't see behind Lee Smith there. Okay. All right. Mike Lawson, go ahead.
Mike Lawson, 1695 Lowell Road. I'm a member of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, but I'm speaking for myself. I hope you'll give us the opportunity to try to put this together and actually create some affordable housing. I don't think the choice is between seven units and five units. I think the choice is between five units and no units. The select board is appointed, the Affordable Housing Trust, we have the Concord Housing Development Corporation, a number of groups in affordable housing and a number of open space groups. They've all worked very hard to try to create something that we could all agree to. I wish there was more than five.
That's what I hear over and over again. I just can't understand why we can't do it.
Lee probably wishes there were more too, because it's a very delicate compromise. And we've negotiated this as carefully and aggressively as we could. And this is a solution that we are all comfortable with. Often in town, you might recall that there's often conflict between open space and affordable housing and sometimes conflict between affordable housing and neighbors. And all of those things came together here in a very special way, where the open space groups, the affordable housing groups and the neighbors are all supportive of this. We get five affordable units. We get a beautiful piece of open space. I hope you'll give us the opportunity to bring this to fruition for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I do want to note, we don't get the, I mean, we get two units today, right? We get the opportunity to build three.
Okay. We have a few more public comments.
Mike said the alternative is for there to be zero affordable housing and lack of control over what's actually built there when it's sold on the private market to developers.
Okay. Frank?
Yes, Frank Feely, President Concord Housing Foundation, 347 Lexington Road. Needless to say, the foundation would have liked more affordable units too. But when we looked at the whole package, we realized that this was the best deal that we could see and that we do get five units. They don't necessarily have to be billed at 400,000 a unit. There are other ways to get those units reasonably affordable. But what I worry about is this falling apart because frankly, the open space folks can raise money more than we can. And we needed the open space folks to fill the gap. And without that, we'd have, pardon the expression, big mansions on this site if we don't buy it as a town. So for that reason, we went along with the five, even though we would have preferred more.
That's helpful. Thank you. Are there other public comments? Let me see if there's someone on Zoom first before, because you've already spoken-
Keith Bergman has, has got his hand up for a while.
Okay, Keith Bergman.
Hi, Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust and the only one attending virtually tonight. Everyone else is in the room, so hello, fellow members. I, I'd certainly echo the comments that have been made that the trust would have preferred more affordable housing, but ultimately, having been given the opportunity to see a couple of iterations, went with the one that produced five affordable units rather than two, which was what was shown to us initially, and that sold the deal for us. We took a vote that said we would support at least five affordable units on this property, but ultimately agreed to signing a memorandum of understanding, which sets the number of affordable units at five. So hope that, so that's the position of the, of the trust. We're, we're at five and are supportive of this, of this acquisition going through. So, and thanks everyone for the, the great effort that has brought us, brought us this far and hope we get all the way.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Is there anyone else online that wants to make a brief comment? All right. Seeing none, Nancy, you can have one last comment.
Nancy Kerr, 25 Upland Road. I know it seems like because of my address that it's, that I don't want it in my backyard and I, I'm not going to talk about the affordable housing, but housing in general, this is a really fragile piece of land. It has a riverfront. It's a hill. It's just not a good place to put, put housing. I mean, five units, yes, that's fine, but I just don't think it's a place you want to throw a bunch of houses and have the sewage going into the river. I mean, I think we're trying to protect that land. It's not just a regular six acre piece of land.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. All right. This will be the last comment on this. Please state your name and address.
Glenn Marman, 416 Old Marlborough Road. We live next to the duplex. If you look at the map in the southern corner, we're the rectangle that's missing out of the, out of the map. And so obviously this has been a very interesting project for us to be involved with and to know about. And I have been incredibly impressed from what I've seen of the different stakeholders coming to something that it seems like everyone can support, because there were lots, I was in many of those CPC meetings and there were many times where I didn't think we'd get to anything that anybody supported in any large function. So I'm, I'm really impressed by the work done by, by various groups to get to the point that we are at today. And, you know, from what we've heard here, what I, what I've heard in previous conversations, I think earlier the, the select board was expressing that, you know, this was feedback they wanted to give, make sure that this was a perspective that was heard. But it seems to me like from what I'm hearing of the housing stakeholders, that this, this has been a perspective that they've had. They want, they wanted as many affordable housing units as, as they could get, and this is where it got to. And as someone for whom this is literally their backyard, I welcome the affordable housing. I recognize that it will result in a bunch of construction that will be obnoxious to listen to, but it is a noble goal and it's a thing that the, that the town needs. And so I am proud to support this plan, both emotionally and financially through the open space fundraising. And I do really fear what happens if we try to change things at this point. They've, so much work has gone in to get things where they are right now. They've, so much work has gone in to get things where they are right now. I do share the belief that it's not a choice between five or seven or more than that. It's a choice between five or this falling apart and all of that just getting turned into affordable housing, and that it's a choice between five and zero, so.
Thank you very much. Okay. Does the Select Board wish to, anybody want to make a motion now, or are we going to report a town meeting? Okay. I think we're going to wait for Susan and report a town meeting. Carrie?
No, I thought Linda looked like she was going to say something.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I move affirmative action on Article 25.
Is there a second? Okay. Seeing none, we will continue until we have Susan here, and we will have to make a decision by town meeting. Thank you, everybody. Very huge amount of work, beautiful site, and we will figure something out somehow. Thank you. Okay, back to Article 26. Is there any more discussion from the board on any of Article 26? Do we want to vote on Article 26 tonight?
I, I don't know if we got clarity about whether it mattered about the allocation of funds on Item F.
Right. I don't think we got clarity. So what I'm going to suggest is that since we don't seem to have any of the rest of it controversial or questions, that we take a vote on 26. And then if something develops on 25 and we have to reconsider, we could always do that. So, so I, I'm going to suggest that we go ahead with 26 tonight if we can, just so we can print in the warrant.
I just wonder if it would create any confusion.
It might.
What do you think? Anybody?
Does anybody want to make a motion on 26?
I'll move that we recommend affirmative action on Article 26 as it appears in, in the warrant.
All right. Is there a second? I'll, I'll second it then, if I can, for discussion. Do you?
Well, I'm just concerned about, again, this allocation of funds relative to Article 25, and whether that will lead to confusion about kind of where the board is on this article, so.
Well, I think that one of the other things we're going to do tonight is, is on some of these articles, we have to write a little explanation.
Yes.
So we could say that.
You want to assign somebody, which I think makes sense, by the way.
Yeah, if you're volunteering. But I was going to say, if you don't want to, if, if, I think that whoever writes it up, and if no one wants to write it up, I will, but we could say if something else develops in 25, there might be a different allocation, but that we support the $1 million total. I think there's a way to write this up.
Okay. I just.
But you don't have to agree.
Okay.
What do you think, Linda?
So I'm trying to recall at this point. I think just our, I thought just our recommendation went in the FinCom book, not.
For most of them, that's right. But for a few, we might end up writing a couple of sentences if there's some confusion. Are you in favor of moving this article tonight or waiting until we resolve?
I thought we already had a motion on the table.
Right. Okay. We have a motion on the table. So is everybody ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of affirmative action on Article 26?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The article passes three to one. And we are now on Article 29, parking.
What is this, 29?
Can I just, before we move on, can I just talk about what the process will be for adding a few sentences, and whether the board would see that?
Oh, whether the board would see that? So, oh.
There won't be anything in the FinCom report. The FinCom report will just say, "Select Board Vote."
From the fact.
Okay. I thought that there were a few.
That's, that's what I was.
I thought there might be a few where we had to. We're going to be discussing this whole thing at 8:45 anyway?
My, my, yeah, but my concern was, the comment I made earlier about the FinCom book.
Well, that would even be easier if we don't have to write anything. Okay. Okay. We are going to continue now with Article 29. Carrie, do you want to give a very brief synopsis of this article? It's the parking meter receipts.
Right. So Article 29 is essentially the appropriation of the parking meter budget, and the amount requested is 300,000, I think, in the warrant. It originally started at 400,000, which is more closely resembled our pre-COVID expenditure from that particular fund. But we've revised it down to 300,000. It is funded through parking meter receipts, and the main components of, of the budgeted funding are the meter maintenance, and we have police personnel that are assigned to monitoring the meters. And then there's, there's some addition, some incidental striping projects that go along with that as well. So that's what that project is. We do own the meters, and we have an annual contract with a third party to maintain the meters.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this article?
Yeah. The question I have is, what is the effect if this does not pass?
So if this does not pass, then we do not have an appropriation to, to, to maintain the meters, or we wouldn't be able to necessarily enforce. That, the recommendation from staff would then be to discontinue the program to shut the meters off, because we wouldn't, we don't, we have a third party to, to maintain, and we need the receipts from, from the, the meters in order to fund that cost.
And then would there, go ahead. Would there be a breach of contract of any sort? Would we be in default?
So we have a three-year contract that actually ends this June 30, and we have an opportunity to extend. And we also have an opportunity with a certain amount of notice to, to get out of the contract.
When does that, when does that notice period expire?
I, I would have to look at, at the contract.
I mean, this may be a referendum on the continuation of parking meters, in effect, whether, what we decide to do on this. But if we have the opportunity also to non-renew the contract, that means that we can fund, you know, the obligation, but still not make a commitment to the ongoing parking meter arrangement.
Sure. And I think the only other thing that I would mention, if, if town meeting were to, to turn down, vote no action on this, we would have a slight budget issue, because there, there is, the, the striping would still need to be done, and we don't have that accounted for in the, in the town's general fund budget.
Striping meaning not the lines in the middle of the street, but the, the marking the parking spaces?
I think we've, in some years, it's been limited to just the parking spaces. In some years, it's been a little more liberal than that. But there, there is some amount of work that would be required to be done on an annual basis, that would not be planned for in the town's general fund budget.
But if we don't have parking meters, we don't need parking spaces.
Well, I think.
Where people are going to pull in, however?
Right. I, I would assume that we would do that.
Well, okay. I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. And I'd like to know how much we're talking about, and how much notice we would need, whether, you know, we have to give more than 60 days' notice or something like that. But generally.
So the contract expires on June 30, 2020. There's not.
2022, you mean?
2022, excuse me. So there, there's not an automatic renewal of that contract. So it's either going to expire, or we are going to issue a request for proposals for a new contract.
Okay.
Okay. So it will automatically lapse at the end, and then we would have the opportunity presumably to enter into a new contract or to extend the existing contract.
Yes.
After. What, what is the cost of that contract approximately?
It is, it's about $120,000 per year.
So the remainder of the budget is for enforcement with the police department and, and striping?
Enforcement, replacement of, of parts. The, the meters themselves, the replace, the, the maintenance is very significant. As we've talked about before, we have issues with cell coverage, and so there's a lot of replacement that, that happens more frequently than would if, if the meters weren't continually searching for a signal.
And is there any progress on Verizon getting a, a new site for wireless in the center?
So I do believe that there is a proposal to add some additional on an existing site, and I believe that Verizon is the carrier. And then we have the potential proposal to, to have a tower at Kai's Road that we have not advanced significantly, but we.
Because they were going to do a private, they said, installation. That's what Kate reported. So I'm just curious if that's moved forward, because I think that's material to the effectiveness of these meters, right? It's.
It is. That, that issue needs to be resolved for the meters, for public safety, for the convenience of, of people visiting the town, the center. I guess the, the issue is, it wasn't that long ago that the town invested a significant amount to replace those meters. So that was maybe 2016. And I, I think any day of the week, if you ask if people are in favor of the meters, I think 50% of the people are, and 50% of the people aren't. And, and I think that can change day to day. So I, I just would be concerned about making a decision without really having much of a public process. And I understand, over the years, the town has had public processes, but I, this is kind of a big decision to make in a very short period of time with very limited public input.
Well, I agree with that. And we do have, coming up in the next few months, a long-term parking discussion that we need to have. I think, though, the benefits of this program are mostly for the contractor and possibly for the police who are earning overtime, but not for, really for the citizens or the businesses, because if you think about Sundays, we don't really have a parking problem. We don't have a problem on Saturdays when it's Christmas time, and it's the busiest time of year, and we don't enforce the meters. And most of the budget does not go to the striping. So altogether, I have not been in favor of parking, and I've heard recently that the business community is 50-50, or even more businesses do not want to have the parking. So at this time, I would have to vote no action on this article, or we could take some time and report a town meeting. But that, that's just my position. Others think?
Would it be possible to, to extend the, the contract for, for a limited period of time, like on a month-to-month basis while we were making our decision? Rather than say we have to, we have to make a decision between now and June 30, otherwise we have us, we have a town full of dead parking meters.
So we have a contract through June 30. I, I was going to suggest that perhaps we could look at doing a one-year extension of the contract, so that there could be an analysis and an opportunity for the public to weigh in. I don't know that we would need to do a month-to-month extension, because we'll have town meeting before the contract expires.
Okay. Linda?
So the one-year extension makes more sense to me, given time to go out to the public, and also to have a better sense of whether or not the private entity is going to extend their contract with, or allow extra, if it's Verizon that's working with a private party. The other concern about the contract is, you know, usually you can't let them run out and still get the extension. You know, usually there's a 30-day clause or something in there.
Yeah. Well, we, we certainly can take a look at that, now that I have a better sense of, of where the board is relative to this article.
I'm sure they'd love to have the business. I mean, it's not like they have to make an investment in order to continue for a few months. It's just more revenue for them. But during that one-year period, we're still probably not going to have any better cell service in, in the area, which is one of the big problems with these meters.
I think it depends on what the solution is. I, I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't know, I, I am aware of a potential, a potential solution, but I, I don't know that it has been discussed publicly. And so I think if that solution were to come to fruition, that would be in a, in a pretty short term. If we were to try to come up with a plan to have a tower at the Kai's Road campus, that, that would be more than a year likely, because we still have to work with the National Park Service.
I don't think that the real issue is cell service. I think the real issue is, what is the benefit of this program and what is the cost? And I, but I would support a one-year continuation to study it. But if we come back here next year and we're still studying it, I mean, we really have to actually do some research and have a board discussion and, and have some public input during the year. And if we can do that, I would support the article.
So how far down the road does a 300 and some odd thousand dollars take us?
Well, that would be until June 30, 2023.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Want me to make a question?
Like all the best compromises, it requires us to do nothing.
Well.
No, we have to have a motion.
We have to make a motion. So move to recommend affirmative action on Article 29 as written in the warrant.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for that suggestion, Carrie. We'll study it this year. Great. Okay. We are on to Article 32 and 33. I see Burton Flint is here. Thank you for your patience.
I'm going to take a quick sip of water.
All right. Matt is leaving for one minute. Burton, do you want to come up?
Yeah, I was just planning on making any presentation, but I'm.
No, that's okay. We, I think we have some questions for you.
This is, what are you talking about now? 32?
32 and 33.
Okay. Formula Business and the Thoreau Business District.
Correct. Henry, do you have some questions? Do you want to start?
Well, I wouldn't say I have a question. I have a statement. I will always and unalterably be opposed to the Formula Business bylaw, which I think is, and any of its extensions, for two reasons. One is, I think it's bad policy. And number two, I am convinced that if anybody ever litigates it, the town will lose. So those two reasons, I think, definitely should not be extended. And if we wanted to be serious about it and about our litigation budget for the future, we would consider repealing it.
Okay.
So that means I'm not in favor of extending it.
Okay.
In case I haven't made, made myself clear.
Linda?
So maybe you're going to speak about this, that there was some tweaking of the language regarding.
Oh, with, in accordance with the suggestions, Terry, you had made about either versus they, and.
It's just some minor wordsmithing.
Yeah, I think we've got to consider those at our meeting tomorrow night. We, I mean, you, you sent those wordsmithing changes in, but I don't know that there's been any process to make those changes as of yet. Yeah.
Right.
Our first meeting since you sent those in us tomorrow.
I'm the one who sent those in. It's just, it's not a substantive thing. It's a wordsmithing type thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Matt?
So I know this may be kind of shocking, but as someone who brought forward the original Formula Business. So I know this may be kind of shocking, but as someone who brought forward the original formula business bylaw back in 2010, there's a petition article that didn't pass, but then subsequently one for West Concord passed in 2011. And then later, when I was on the planning board, we passed one for Concord Center. That actually, there's a concern that I have about extending to Thorough Depot. And that is that there's a very extensive article that was written by Mark Bobrowski, who is formerly of the planning board and also just at authority on Massachusetts land law, but also, you know, has thought hard about the constitutional issues involved here. And his view at the end of this article that was written specifically on the formula business question had concluding, near concluding paragraph that said this. Finally, district caps or bans like that imposed as a townwide cap or ban will be closer call on judicial review. However, where a municipality has good reason to install the district cap or ban, such as the historic or cultural value of the district, the burden may be tolerated, particularly when the municipality offers valid opportunities to locate formula businesses in other districts. So my concern is that if we continue the march of controlling each of our business districts with a formula business restriction, that we are in fact potentially increasing the exposure, not just because there's more opportunity for a business owner to, you know, object, but really because we are not continuing to offer a real opportunity there. And I should also mention, the second thing is that if I think of Thorough Depot District, the businesses that are most prominent there are actually formula businesses. So those like Starbucks, CVS, Dunkin' Donuts, Ace Hardware, Crosby's. And I don't want to leave anybody out, but the idea is that as opposed to our other business districts where we have, you know, many uniquely defined establishments, there in Thorough Depot, we have more of a convention of having these branded businesses. The third thing is that as opposed to the other districts where we really are trying to preserve the look and feel of those sites, we in the same town meeting have a proposal to upzone the Thorough Depot District. In other words, we are hoping, I think, through zoning to encourage, you know, development in probably a different scale than in the past. So I think that those three things conspire to, in my mind, against extending the formula business legislation to, or bylaw to include Thorough Depot.
All right. Burton, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, sure. And thanks, Matt, for sending me that article. I think the overriding point of that article was it was, he was doing an analysis based upon the dormant commerce clause.
That's right.
Which is about as, you know, it's a facts and circumstances test, a little like nailing jello to a tree in terms of it's oftentimes, the outcome of a dormant commerce clause case will be dependent upon the right that's being protected. And so I don't think that there can be a litmus test or bright line test, especially in something like this, which there hasn't been much litigation on. I would point out that the Wellfleet case that has been decided by the land court on this didn't really look to the dormant commerce clause. It just looked to use versus ownership, right? And we have tried to tailor our language, as you were part of, to be focused entirely on use rather than, than ownership. Now, the, as the question as to, you know, whether it's good policy in the first case, you know, of course, there will be people that have different opinions either way. The one in West Concord has been popular. It hasn't been tested. The one in Concord Center has been popular, was popular. And when we were talking about, as you talked about, the upzoning of the Thorough Depot Business District, that was something that people were also looking to for there. They were saying, well, if there is going to be change, we want that change to reflect the character of what's here. That doesn't mean keeping all the buildings the same size or keeping the same density of development necessarily, though for some that would be the case. But when it comes to speaking about the formula business bylaw, I think it means that the types of uses which we like in, in the Thorough Depot as it exists today. So I think they're all good points. I think they're, they are all rebuttable. And I think that we have tried to focus on, on, on use rather than, than what the land, the land courts test for ownership.
I think the problem, I would love it if the formula business bylaw created more of the types of business we wanted. But I don't, I don't think you can, you can do that through zoning. It's largely a matter of economics and patterns of occupation.
Sure.
Very few of the businesses in Concord are owned by residents of the town. And few of their employees can afford to be residents of the town. And the value of real estate is such that the mom and pop business is not going to be seriously promoted by a restrictive zoning bylaw. And the, so, and so I don't think it accomplishes. Oh, and what was slipping my mind is that we really haven't hit the hard limit in any of these districts, which is when we are going to see some, we're going to see some real legal problems arise when it's no longer possible to get a special permit, but there are no special permits available regardless.
Sure.
And so if you have a limit that's always higher than what you've got, the question is, does a limit accomplish anything? Everybody who's applied for a special permit, and I'm aware, I think of only two or three cases, they've been granted routinely to businesses that are, you know, like one of them has like, you know, over 100 branches worldwide and things like that, which it kind of seems that they're being issued on a pro forma basis until we hit the ceiling. And then we're going to have a, we're going to, we're going to have a real difficulty and you're going to have to say to somebody who owns some commercial real estate and they have a tenant, and we have to say to them, you just can't rent to that tenant.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you, Henry.
That's the problem that I have with it. And I.
I do want to just say that, you know, the reason why I might be opposed to this, and again, this is just, I'm putting this out there. I really, you know, am not a attorney. But I do, I am concerned just based upon this information. And I was able to check in with Mr. Bobrowski when he was representing a client in front of the planning board a few years later, because this article is now 10 years old. You know, and he still felt that it was the same, you know, I said, hey, what do you think? Was we were going to be extending this to Concord Center? And he said, well, as long as there's another place, you know, and that was his view. And I really respect that. And I just, I'm concerned that if we do, we overextend, we might jeopardize what we have today in West Concord and in Concord Center. And I consider it a great success that, I mean, we haven't ever hit the limit. It shows that we do have this distinctive business district, so they have continued to endure as distinctive, unique sets of businesses in those districts.
Okay. Linda, do you have anything to add?
Yep.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion? Okay, very quick comment.
Not quick, sure, sure. I just, I just.
We are running almost one hour late now.
Thank you. Tanya Gielis, 62 Press Control. I didn't, I wasn't really planning to comment on either of these articles, but as, as you were discussing, I know that one, one controversy with the Thorough Depot rezoning is that, is that some people think it will create affordable housing and others think there is no guarantee. And I was wondering if the, if there could be some kind of program where if a developer creates affordable housing, then they can also rent it to a formula business or some, some kind of like, you know, using the two things against each other to create more affordable housing.
Okay. Good idea we might think about in the future. Okay, are we ready for a motion on this?
I guess, I, I mean, again, I'm, I'm willing to wait. And if we get more evidence, you know, then we could rule later. I just, I have these concerns. And at this point, I would be, you know, ruling no action. I would suggest recommending no action.
If I could make a couple just final points, Terry.
Okay.
Now, the planning board has not weighed in on this, right?
Well, it's a planning board article.
Oh, it's a planning board article, duh. Never mind.
So I would point out that, that there has been a case in Massachusetts I alluded to in Wellfleet on formula business, restrictions on formula businesses. And all the, all towns have come up with sort of similar but slightly varying versions. The town of Wellfleet's that the land court struck down because it essentially restricted formula businesses entirely from Wellfleet. We've, Matt's point about we're extending it district by district, we're effectively also extending the pool, the cap of formula businesses. So all taken together, I think, if you added up the numbers across these three districts, it's in the mid 30s. In particular, if, the point that there's existing formula businesses that are predominant in the district today, we're essentially preserving a model that allows for a lot of formula businesses in the Thorough Depot. Since that Wellfleet case, we have passed additional formula business district bylaws. And, and in the article that Matt alluded to, it was that our original article was discussed and somewhat favorably as one that seemed to pass muster. We've passed another one, which of course has had to be approved by the AG. So we, you know, it might be a bridge too far, but there's nothing to indicate that in, in our discussions or in the review by town council.
And that's the other thing is that, of course, town council hasn't weighed in on this. And the AG ultimately would weigh in from a constitutional perspective. So that's why I'm not like out there really ready to, to say no action on this, but I've just wanted to share my misgivings.
But the subsequent ones have been also only approved by the Attorney General's Office, which was the same office that, for instance, approved Wellfleet bylaw, by the way. And, and the reason that the Attorney General's Office did not, refused to approve our second attempt at it was because they said that it had not been specifically held to be contrary to statute. Not that it was, would be unenforceable if litigated. But Judge Long was very clear in the Wellfleet case that such a bylaw, the Wellfleet law was not only facially invalid, but invalid as applied. And the Wellfleet bylaw did not have an absolute ceiling. And ours was more, way more restrictive. So, but that's just as the, as our town moderator said to me on the fronts of the, front of the steps of the townhouse about a year ago, she said, reasonable people can disagree.
Okay, so what does the board want to do with this article? Do we want to make a motion tonight?
I recommend affirmative action.
Affirmative action, okay.
Okay, is there a second? No second. All right, is there any other motion? Okay, I guess we're going to report a town meeting again. We're going to have a few late nights coming up here. All right, we're on to Article 33. What is the board's discussion on Article 33, Thorough Depot Business District? Any comments, questions on that?
I think it's an excellent set of best practices for zoning for a district like this. And I hope that it leads to development according to the kind of patterns that they, they have developed.
I agree. And my only question though is with this new MBTA wrinkle, does that change any of your thinking on this? Does it change? It's really unfortunate timing, the way that law came out, right? When you had just finished this work. But does anything change because of that?
I don't think it changed the planning board's deliberations. It didn't change my view in moving the article forward. We were responding to the long-range plan and the housing production plan. I think it was raised as something where people said, well, this is going to come along. Why don't you wait? As maybe a tactic to take our foot off the gas and moving forward with what we thought was the appropriate article at that time. The, I, I heard Mr. Dane say previously, there's some doubt as to whether we would ever become subject to the MBTA Communities Act. And I think, looking at the regulation, I mean, you saw the article I wrote on that. I think looking at the regulations now, that Concord would rather deal with the consequences than deal with the act because it's just untenable in our, in the 50-acre parcels surrounding our MBTA stations.
I'll take that one step further. I believe when you look at what they tried to do and what they, what, what having a half-mile circle with multifamily housing, 15, 15 units to the acre, I, if they had any real plan, I think it must have been really to find a way to redistribute housing funds. In other words, to have a formula which by its consequences would in fact cut communities like Concord out of eligibility for the funds that they were withheld. You do not, you do not adopt a zoning because it's inconceivable that a town like Concord would accept this type of zoning. It would mean completely rebuilding the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can say, based upon the public discourse we had around this act, which I would think is a relatively modest proposal, that I think that the, the MBTA Communities Act would go over like a lead balloon.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are we ready for?
I move to recommend affirmative action on Article 33 as printed in the warrant.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that passes three to one. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Burton. All right, we're going on to Article 36, which I think we can do very quickly. I would just like to address a few questions from the public hearing. I worked with Kari Dari and she also contacted the Secretary of State's office. The cost was one question. If we have a one-question ballot, which is usually what we have, the total cost of printing and mailing would be about $2,400.
How much?
$2,400. There is a sample in the packet of what Burlington did. Looks like this. It's basically, this is my black and white printer, but it looks like the referendum that you get on the statewide ballots.
But as a practical matter, you know, that our town clerk sends out mailings reminding people of elections anyway. So there may not be any additional cost or any significant additional cost because we are very proactive about encouraging people to vote. And so this could easily fit within that kind of structure without additional cost.
All right, two more comments. Another question from the public hearing was, how does town council know who to contact to write the pro and con statements? So Kari and I studied this and Section E of Chapter 53, Section 18B states that the principal proponents are sometimes the school committee or the finance committee or a ballot question committee, or it could be the first 10 signers of a petition article. And finally, Kari reminded me that there are some more benefits of this article that I had not even thought of. For example, the election workers right now are not allowed to explain anything about a ballot question or answer any questions. So if we pass this article, the election workers would be allowed to give out the handout, which is the same as what people got in the mail, or point to it hanging on the wall. And the mailing, when it goes out, might also increase voter turnout and remind people, as Henry said, that an election is coming up. And one really good example is in this warrant, we have Article 22. And one really good example is in this warrant, we have Article 22 for debt exemption for the CCHS access road, but that election will not take place until September. So it is entirely possible that a voter could come in, in September and not remember what it is that they're voting for. So I think it would be helpful and I hope the board will support and the town meeting will support Article 36. Of course, this election coming up, it would not apply. It would, you know, it has to go through.
I move affirmative action.
Okay.
Second.
Just wanted to answer the questions from the public hearing.
Maybe actually formalize that. I've moved that we recommend affirmative action on Article 36 as written in the warrant.
Thank you.
Is that a second?
I always stand corrected and I'm rarely corrected, but I always stand there.
Why are you seconding it though?
Yes, I accept that.
All right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And now we are on Article 37. We do have a little update from the petitioner, Joe Stein. I'm not sure if he is with us.
I am. Good morning.
Okay. There he is. Okay. Are there any more questions or comments from the board on Article 37, given that Joe has provided some material in our packet?
I just had a question about what I consider to be the human nature of the situation. The argument is that asking people to pay for a bag is much more effective in discouraging bag use than by giving them a discount. But in the nature of things, it's not, at least, it's not, at least in a supermarket, when you go in and you buy, are you not likely to just automatically see that charge on your receipt that will be automatically put on your bill unless you say, whoa, what about this? I didn't take a bag.
Okay. Joe, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. I, I'm not 100% sure, clear on it, but I mean, as, as I understand it, you know, this, this checkout bag charge is enacted in Boston and other cities. And when you go purchase an item at a retailer, they will ask you if you'd like a bag and you would say yes or no. If you say yes, it would be printed on the receipt as a taxable item. I don't know if that answers your question, Dane.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, it's an answer, but I'm, I guess if, if, if a store that I'm shopping in is subject to this, I'm certainly going to look at my receipt to see if they charged me for a bag, whether I brought my own or not.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
So at the, at the meeting where we last discussed this, I, I think there was a request to see some additional copy in terms of what the motion would actually look like. And I'm not sure that was in our packet, was it?
Right. So there was something that came through today by email. There were quite a few emails that came through today.
I, I did see that.
And I think it is the entire motion.
Yeah.
I don't have it in front of me right now.
Revised language to reflect the Sudbury law. Is that correct?
That's right.
I know. It came through today, which is kind of last minute.
Well, I, I did see that then. So the, the, in the article itself, it talks about charge of such bag equal to or greater than 10 cents per checkout bag. So there's not a definitive cost. That's one problem. I, I do think there's some problems with definitions. Some of the material I saw refers to bags with handles, but then when you actually read the article, that's not clear in terms of how it appears. And in some ways, you know, I certainly support encouraging all of us for sustainability practices, but I just don't feel like this is ready for prime time.
Okay.
I mean, I, I understand that not setting it to an exact 10 cents, but to a minimum of 10 cents, because as we saw in some of the material provided, the bags themselves can cost up to 60 cents. I mean, that's the cost of the, of the bag. So, you know, I think, and then there will be inflation. So the thing is if we're not going to have, you know, to amend this on a, on an ongoing basis, I think that.
And then we had mixed reactions, excuse me, Matt. We had mixed reactions from some of the shopkeepers in terms of being in favor or not in favor.
And this is not something that permits the shop, the.
No, it requires at least a 10 cents charge per bag.
It requires it so that even if presumably, even if they wanted to say, we're giving you the bag free because you're a good customer, or they can't do that.
Right. No, that's the, the idea. And, you know, I, I did hear the objections, you know, about tourists, you know, don't tend to bring their own bags, which I, I kind of understand. And at the same time, I also think it's useful to set that tone in that Concord's the kind of place where you pay for your bag and that tourists will see that. I mean, it's, it, it says that we care about sustainability. And so I'm, I'm okay. I've been to many municipalities in different parts of the country that have this in place. I've also lived in Europe where it would be shocking that they wouldn't charge for the bag or even provide a bag in many cases if you didn't bring your own. It's a, it's a habit and we, we need to encourage that habit. And this is the, probably the most proactive way to do it without literally preventing people from having bags, which would be obnoxious. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's really an incidental charge. It's really making a statement, but it, I think it's a statement we need to make.
Is there further discussion? Somebody on Zoom has a comment, a brief comment?
Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. I'm strongly in favor of this. It's the right kind of behavioral economic nudge that doesn't cost the vendors any, the, the businesses anything in terms of freedom and money.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Are we ready for a motion?
So move to recommend affirmative action of Article 37 as amended and distributed to us today.
Is there a second? No.
Second. Wow. This is an amazing evening.
Yeah, this is a wild meeting. Does anyone want to make any different motion? Or, or do you want to report?
How about a motion to adjourn?
That would be great, but we have a lot to do. We can make a motion for no action or we can report a town meeting. Linda and Henry, what do you want to do?
You know, at, at this point, given the state of, of the way it's been put together and also having seen, seen the full narrative, I would say no action. And I, you know, maybe by town meeting, it'll be clearer.
Well, that's two different things.
Yeah, but then at that point, citizens can decide.
Okay. So are you making a motion for no action?
Um, yes.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
All right. All right. So we have a motion on the floor for no action for Article 37. All in favor? Only one person's in favor. Okay. So that, that fails then, I guess. And then we were going to report a town meeting, which is what I think we should do since we don't seem to know what we want to do with this article. Let's go on to Article 38 then. This one might be a little easier. The petitioner is Dean Banfield. Dean, are you here? And also I think that Wendy Raveli is here, the Chair of the Concord Municipal Light Plant. Now, we discussed this article last time and I think we just delayed taking a vote in order to hear from the light plant. So maybe we should hear from Wendy.
So Wendy Raveli, 42 Bow Street, Chair, Concord Municipal Light Board. And I'm sorry I missed the conversation last week and realized it was discussed. So as many may know, the Light Board did vote in favor of the article, but there were several concerns raised during the course of the conversation. So I thought it was worth reviewing the select board here. But first and foremost, I think it's fair to say the board is unanimously in support of expanding solar generation on town property. You know, it hasn't been pursued mainly because of the other priorities that the board has been pursuing over the last few years. But the concerns really predominantly were in recognition that the light plants and the board, this year in particular, has a very heavy workload for this year of work and things to be accomplished by the end of the year. So the concerns are how we could actually accomplish the plan being built by the end of the year as called for in the article. The Light Board really felt that if this was of concern to the town, that we needed additional resources to be able to meet the spirit of the article. There were other concerns about really the feasibility of getting this accomplished by the end of the year. And I would really suggest that if we're going to have a good, high quality plan, well thought out with good budgets, it's a very tight timeframe and may not be feasible. But, but what I also need is to tell you that the board did not have more time to discuss and really make recommendations around resources. There is a feeling that there's a lot of demand on the Light Board and that maybe additional FTE resources would eventually be needed, but the staff, as it is right now, can't accomplish this plan. But we will need more resources if we're going to try to get a plan put together by the end of the year. Now, that might be consulting resources. It's not clear, but the board needs more time to figure out how to do that and where that cost will come from. You know, right now would presumably be coming from the light plant. So that would be, you know, an impact to our bottom line, et cetera. So more work needs to be done there to figure out how this could be accomplished.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. So the sound is not really great. I'm going to repeat back what I think I heard. I think you said the Light Board is unanimously in favor of the.
Unanimous.
Oh, not unanimous.
It was a four to one vote.
Okay. The Light Board voted in favor, but you have concerns about the heavy workload that you already have and you may need additional resources and additional time to implement. Did I basically get that right? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Comments, questions from the select board?
I just wanted to note that I think the discussion was rushed right at the end of the meeting. And so while there were concerns raised about the timeframe, for example, that the vote was not a qualified vote. In other words, they, they didn't suggest amending to extend the time, but I don't know that that necessarily reflected the, whether the board would have, you know, requested that change because really it was right up to the last second of the meeting that this discussion was happening.
Okay. Well, I think.
But there seemed to be real momentum to vote in support of this by board members, but we will talk about it further this week, next week as well.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah. I move to recommend affirmative action on Article 38 as printed in the warrant.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And we're ready for Article 45, which I believe is BD Center. Does anybody have any questions or comments about Article 45?
Which, which one is 45?
45 is the BD Center Enterprise Fund.
I will next year.
All right. Well, let's see if we can get through this year first.
That's right.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board? Is everyone ready to take a position?
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 45 as written in the warrant.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we are going to move on to the reformatory branch, Articles 46 and 47. So we're going to take them together. And we started talking about Article 46 last time. I see we have the petitioners in the room for Article 47 here. And I'm not sure who we have on Zoom.
I think I see Phil.
We have Phil, Phil Posen on Zoom.
All right. Very good. So.
I think that the biggest question, well, there are many questions on Article 46 that I've heard raised by others, but for me, the biggest question had been about funding. And so we had information provided in our packet that a source of funding had been identified from an unused funds from the fire department, right? Or no, the.
Fire department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For our scuba equipment or something like.
No, no, for breathing apparatus.
Breathing apparatus.
I would like to comment on that further. So we do have some remaining funds. We have a, the self-contained breathing apparatus in the fire department in the fiscal '22 capital plan. We did after town meeting receive notice that we had been awarded a grant, which we were not necessarily expecting. And so we don't have to expend all of the money that was appropriated at town meeting. Normally, we would just incorporate the remaining funding into the next capital article as a, next year's capital article as a funding source. So if, if it's $4 million and we had $100,000 left, we would ask for 3.9 of new and repurpose the $100,000. So I, my concern is the precedent that we are setting by, and previously we had talked about the $75,000 that had been appropriated in 2018 for trails as a potential funding source. My issue is the precedent that is being, that, that may be set by using capital funds that went through appropriations that went through the process as, as a funding source for an article that, that comes up late in the process. My preference would be, since our budget pro forma includes, we did not anticipate the return of this capital money. My preference would be to use raise and appropriate as a revenue source for this article, which means taxation, knowing that the capital article is going to be 75,000 plus lower in new money than it would be, if that makes, if that makes sense to you. Rather than just saying, we're going to go to another, to take capital articles.
The capital article for this year, Article 10 on this warrant?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
So the, the new money ask would be reduced by what is left over in that fire capital article.
But that's money that's amortized, not money that is expended if it's a capital article. Or is it, is it, or is it a capital article that is expensed?
So that, that was part, let's see. I have not borrowed, I have not borrowed that yet. So we would not be, we would not be borrowing any more than we needed.
So would it have any effect on free cash?
No, we're not.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Not directly. Obviously.
Right, right.
Not directly. Everything indirectly impacts free cash, right?
Okay. All right. Other questions, comments from the board, and then we're going to let the proponents talk.
Well, I think that the cost is only, I mean, the question, I think the more important question is, do you. question is, do you want to do it? Not where you're going to find the money. Although if the money is not available, it makes it easier to decide. I'm fairly well persuaded by the proponents of Article 47, that the way that Article 46 is structured, which places the emphasis on engineering and grading and elevations, is likely to be biased, be an approach which is biased toward the development and quote, "improvement" of the, of that trail. And I am persuaded that if we were going to do a study at all, that the first issue should be the environmental one. And if we are going to do a study at all, which I don't see as a matter of great urgency, by the way, it should be focused on the environmental and naturalistic issues that are posed, rather than whether it's too steep or too muddy or whatever.
Okay. Linda?
I'm also, besides the funding recommendation that was included in the packet, which raised a number of questions for me, but you've answered how you would prefer to address that as Town Manager. But the other concern I had around this was, I know that we have plans for the transportation area. We have a transportation committee, and this did not go through those channels, albeit is my understanding.
Well, actually, I did check in with the Transportation Committee.
Okay.
And the Chair informed me that they voted to recommend no action on this Article 46.
Okay.
Did they describe what their reasoning was?
They might have, but I don't remember it right now. Sorry.
Okay. So anyway, that's helpful information. Since we are looking at a number of transportation issues before the town, you know, maybe we need to be starting at a higher level in terms of planning, consultant assistance. I'm not sure what it would be.
Right.
And that that goes through that process. One of the recommendations I saw in the funding recommendation to the petitioner was suggesting that it go to CPC as a potential source. You know, and we've had one situation where something went to CPC without going through the departments or without going through Board or committees. And that is problematic when they're not working within, in general. That's problematic, not all the time, but for something this important.
Right. And we did have that transportation meeting where a townwide, global look at our transportation was suggested, and you made the comment, Linda, which I thought was really good, that we take a look at trying to get that funded.
Yeah.
Well, I might not have phrased it exactly, but we do have Phil with his hand up. Phil, would you like to respond?
I think actually Nick had his hand up, but I'll simply say that I have been very gratified to work with the staff of the town, and I have relied on their guidance and recommendations with regard to the funding source, the change to the language of the petition, et cetera. And my hope is that the Select Board recognized that it's appropriate for the town to take some action to promote the goals that have been suggested in numerous planning studies over the last decade, which is to create trails, opportunities to get to Concord Center without having to drive and park a car for all folks. So the idea of the additions to the language of the petition make it clear that the intention is to study not only just a trail, or not only just grading and improvements, but how those grading and improvements will relate to the wildlife habitat, will relate to accessibility for folks with mobility issues, and public safety. All of those suggestions were made during the course of the various hearings that I have attended, and I've been very grateful for the various suggestions that people have made. I also want to point out that one of the people who I'm looking at on Zoom has made a suggestion that this be considered a needs assessment as opposed to feasibility study. I thought that was a good idea. So that language is also incorporated in the text of the article. So I really appreciate the Select Board's interest in this. I do agree that it's an important matter, and I hope that you will report to the town meeting that you favor the idea of planning, because that's really what this is about. It's not about a construction project. It's not about moving a shovel of earth. It's about making a plan and examining the issues with respect to this particular, very important town resource. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phil. I see there's a number of people in the room who want to speak. I'm just going to call first on Nick Papas, because we did refer to the Transportation Committee. I think it's Nick who has his hand up there.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hello? Yeah, Nick Papas, Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee. We did recommend no action on this, and at the time, the wording seems to be changing, but at the time, this was a feasibility study, and the point was made in the committee that what were we, what was, the feasibility of what? The real issue is the town has never stated what the purpose of the Reformatory Branch Trail should be, whether it should be a transportation trail, a recreational trail, handicapped, accessible trail. And I think using this article as a way for, to force the town to make a decision is sort of the backwards way to do it. The town should decide that through some committee or some body that's part of town government, we need to decide what we want this trail to be. And there are very strong opinions about that in the town. I'm very uncomfortable about the possibility of a consultant who doesn't have the writ to go off and do that broad thing as part of a public, open-meeting law disclosure process would be the best way to do it. And that's, that is what I took as the position of the committee as we discussed it.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to turn to the participants in the room. Please come up to the microphone, yes, and give your name and address.
I'm Wayne Lob, 223 Elsinore Street, and I have a brief slideshow, which Chris was going to bring up for me, but I have no idea where it's going to show.
It's behind you.
It's behind me. Oh, this is a problem.
I'll, I'll bring it up. Hold it.
There you go. And Wayne, you recently gave this presentation at the Trails Committee. Is that correct?
That's right. One week ago, I gave it at the Trails Committee. There it is. Okay. So it says first on top, Reformatory Branch Trail in Concord, which I will call RBTC to save a lot of time as I talk about it. And it also distinguishes it from RBTB, the Bedford extension of the same reform, same reformatory branch. I have here 16 slides of information and data. Actually, it's 15 of that and one of opinion at the end.
Okay.
And I will be very brief, and you can stop me or accelerate me at your wish. Next slide, please. This is a map of trails in our region of Massachusetts. The purple ones are the town hiking, walking trails. The black and green ones are the rail trails and the major bikeways in this region. Let's go to the next slide. Zooming in on those. At the top left, you see the Nashua River Rail Trail. Next one down, Bruce Freeman, as you know, goes from Lowell down to White Pond and hopefully goes to Framingham soon. The next one pointed out is Narrow Gage Rail Trail in Bedford to Belorica. After that, the RBTB, the Bedford Reformatory Branch, that little green spot. There we go. I thought I, oh, it doesn't show. I can't use this on the...
Not on the screen.
Okay. We'll just keep going. Or I can stand up, but that doesn't help anybody.
Not anybody.
Yeah. Okay. So let's, let's keep going. The two, inside the orange circle, oops, basically, yeah. Inside the orange circle, the two green dashes are the two reformatory branches, and the gap between them and Bruce Freeman is part of a larger picture in which networks of bikeways, we hope, will come to pass throughout this region. Right now, the north-south ones are a bit more advanced, and I think in part because there's less demand in their areas. But ultimately, it's the one going across the bottom, the Mass Central, which leads further west and will join with other bikeways, we hope, in the, in the future. Part of the whole thing is somehow linking Bedford and Concord with the Bruce Freeman. And there, I'll go into things that relate to that. Next slide, please. This is the Assabett River Rail Trail at the Maynard and Stowe border. It's notable because it also borders on a National Wildlife Refuge, and its trail that abuts that refuge, like ours abuts Great Meadows, is not paved. It's packed sand for a ways, then it's dirt at the end. But it's at least 13 feet wide everywhere. However, that's not true for our trail, so I'll talk about it a bit later. And I'll come back to this refuge. Next slide. This is just a map of our RBTC from bottom left at Lowell Road up to the top right to the Bedford border and actually to the Route 62 interchange, or exchange. I put this up mainly to show that Open Street Map has a wealth of detail, and it's a very good way to get your way into this. Next slide, please. So who uses RBTC? I think we know. It's on foot, walkers, joggers, birders, et cetera. One thing that I have observed, and I've been doing a lot of observing, is they come in groups, or tend to come in groups, of two or more on foot. And about 60% of people who walk on RBT right now are walking in groups, typically side by side, and they're socializing, and they're slow, and they're distracted, can be, by what they're doing, especially families with small children, especially nature lovers. On wheels, we know what they are, cyclists, inline skaters, skateboarders, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service vehicles, turns out they're cars. I didn't know that, that drive on the reform, on the reformatory branch, and I'll show you where exactly. Most on-wheel cyclists are solo, in my observation. About 60% are solo, 40% in groups. And that kind of makes sense. It's much harder to socialize and get paired up when you're going fast, relatively speaking. People on wheels also try to socialize. It's much harder, obviously, if you're going faster, and they're almost always going faster than ones on foot. Next slide, please. So the fundamental use case for safety is fast-moving cyclists, slow group of walkers. But cyclists are careful and will almost always naturally slow down. However, passing fast from behind, even if safely, can, under walkers, noisy crowd, aircraft, which we have lots of over RBTC, can drown out on your left and drown out the bell. And of course, nature lovers are often distracted. Optimally, we would like to separate the on-wheels from the on-foot, but you need at least 14 feet to do that, which is essentially the main dimension of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. We don't have that luxury on RBTC. Next slide, please. There are several primary issues and factors, which I'll go through one by one quickly. The long-term goal is to make that network for bicycling, but the current issue is, do we make RBTC more of a commuter bikeway now, or do we keep it as, as is on foot? The five things that I'll talk about are endangered species, no surprise, about Great Meadows and the deep ties between RBTC and it. There are granted places that need better surfaces and better drainage. We need to improve ADA accessibility, but I think that the biggest single problem point is the 400-yard jog along the wastewater plant. Okay. Next one, please. So number one, this is priority habitats and endangered species. Any species that's been identified by the Endangered Species Act of 1990, Mesa, automatically makes its location a part of a priority habitat, and any change made inside a priority habitat must go through the full submission and approval required under Mesa. The Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife manages priority habitats and publishes lists only on a town-by-town basis of what those species are. A person on the street can't find out, only professionals. You don't know what exactly they are, or you cannot, as a public person, know what those species are on a per priority habitat basis. Big difference. It has to have professional support. The reason for this is so that risky amateur efforts don't destroy more than they might have helped. Note that Blanding's Turtle and Britton's Violet are just two out of more than 17 Concord endangered species. Not to say that they're in the area we'll be talking about, but that's part of the larger picture. Next, please. Next slide, please. RBTC lies completely inside Priority Habitat 1581. RBTC is the slanted yellow line, bottom left, top right, followed that map that I showed earlier. If you look a little closer on the inset, you'll see that the corner of the wastewater access and the housing there, the trail actually is inside the yellow border in the hatched area, and that is true for every inch of RBTC, all the way from the Bedford line, in fact, beyond there, all the way to Lowell Road. If you look at the bottom left, you'll see a pinched area right by the Concord lumber where it crosses Mill Brook, where it's only about five feet wide at most. So we have challenges about the sizing of this path. Next slide, please. Next slide? Yeah, thank you. Further, this same habitat extends into Bedford, beyond our town line at the northeast into Bedford. The plan, the 100% plan, which is now maybe somewhat in doubt, goes across, actually will go under Route 62, and the paving will stop about 80 yards towards our town line. But that's only a small part of the, of the path coming to our town line. And in fact, Bedford is not planning to make any changes to that stretch, that is to say from a little bit west of Route 62 down to our town line, leaving it, no matter what they do or we do, leaving it unpaved, narrow, winding, weaving, with some sightline challenges. This means that no matter how much improvement is done, there still will be an area which is nowhere close to being what Bruce Freeman does. Next slide, please. Number two of the five, RBTC is uniquely tied to Great Meadows by birding. It's the number 22 in the top 100 birding sites in the state, and the only inland one to be in the top 30, because birds love to fly through here, spend a little time, and move on their way. Secondly, an extremely popular loop walk starts from the parking lot for Great Meadows and goes either clockwise or counterclockwise around the dykes and must go down a 500-yard stretch of RBTC in order to finish. Otherwise, you have to retrace your steps all the way back. It is the only loop that you can do that on at Great Meadows, and it is extremely popular. I've been monitoring what's going on there, and I count that about half of all the walkers on that stretch of Monson, of RBTC, between Monson Road and the Dyke and Edge Trails, are people who are doing that loop, going one way or the other. And I'm sure in summer, those numbers will be very high, probably still about 50%, or maybe more than 50%. And that, we cannot make that change go away, because we're tied, because we're in the same priority habitat as Great Meadows. That will have to continue to be true. That same stretch is where the Fish and Wildlife Service vehicles go, from Monson Road up to the Dyke Trail. There's a locked gate there that... There's a locked gate there that you can see. Next slide, please. It's true that RBTC needs some better surfaces and better drainage, especially from Monument Street up to Sleepy Hollow, also from the Great Meadows Dyke Trail up to the Timber Trail, that's a little further up towards the town line of Bedford. You can see in the picture, which is on that second portion, that there are leaves everywhere, and they compromise the drainage, and the drainage soaks the water, which then becomes muddy, and I've seen bicycles come up to that spot, and a, a young woman crying because she couldn't go any further. The bike wheel would not hold a bit. Fallen leaves will be a challenge, whatever else is done for this stuff. The Narrow Gage Rail Trail in Bedford uses, on the right you see its surface, it uses what's called stone dust, pulverized stone, a popular surface, but it erodes underwater. I walked it in water and ice and mud and everything. And when it gets warm and dry, it becomes hard like pavement, and it is actually considered pavement, even though it looks like it's more natural. It works out to be classified as pavement. Next slide, please. Better ADA accessibility, as Mr. Posner said, absolutely, especially the 400-yard jog. As you're coming up, you see it in the green stripe coming up on the left, there's a jog up a little hill, there's some big boulders right near there, and then about 400 yards across the farm fields, and then back left and go back down to the trail. That's there because once upon a time, there was a leaching pond in that area, and the wastewater plant was using that property. However, it is not ADA accessible even close, and it's very difficult to, to ride a bicycle through the groves of trees. Next slide, please. Fifth and last item, as I was just describing, that former leaching pond, and the problems on that jog. Inside there, where there used to be the pond, you see the dashed line showing that there could be a new bikeway trail built there. It's scrubby, hardly used, I don't think it's used for anything, actually, at this point. Very few large deciduous trees grow there, and they apparently can't because of what's underground in their old rail bed. There are many small conifers, but they count very little compared to any large deciduous tree. If the town were to look into this and put an investment there, perhaps through feasibility, then we would not have to change the existing jog at all, which is a very controversial point. It could remain exactly as is, but bicycles and people in ADA could use this new rail bed extension. So, next slide, please. I've been counting users now for about six weeks. About two-thirds of the users that I've observed have been on foot, other third on wheels. This compares with in last May, the Bruce Freeman formal count showed 1,700 on foot and 1,663 on wheels, up and down Bruce Freeman, a slight excess of on foot over bikes, even though this is a, a bike trail. A lot of people use it, and they wear grooves off the pavement on the sides. I continue to do this work, and I continue to see the same numbers. Next slide, please. So, last slide. Opinion shows up. There are no bike lanes on the roads now in Concord and no bikeways east-west through town, which will be the, the larger transport direction than north-south. I think we already know that from Bruce Freeman. Of course, we have north-south with Bruce Freeman, at least part of the way down. Route 62 is a problem for cycles, a lot of fast-moving cars, there are curves, sight problems going over hills. Today, RBTC is the safest bike route going between Concord and Bedford. One might think the town could very advantageously study the feasibility of a new bikeway across the Massport land, which is just west, just west of Hanscom, and which is not particularly used for any, anything, as far as I can tell. That would mean hooking up with Bedford, because you'd have to split off before 62 and go through some trail areas. There are no priority habitats involved on the Bedford side. And yet, it's taken, what, 20 years to get to the point they're at? If Concord starts to try to make big changes to the RBTC, there will be a long time involved in getting the biologists of the state to make their assessments of whether doing even a small amount of work is going to have a deleterious effect on the endangered species. It's not an easy process whatsoever. So, my opinion, until Concord improves east-west cycling, we have to keep RBTC shared use as best we can. RBTC can and does support on feed, on foot and on wheels pretty well, all things considered, but it, it can't serve either side perfectly, and both sides will need to adjust. I claim that the bicyclists have to adjust more because they're asymmetric. Bicycles are to people as cars are to bicycles. It's, one is much more powerful than the other. I think also the town should start counting users and usages methodically and regularly so that we have a much better and growing understanding of not just this path, but all our paths. And that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, other comments from people in the room?
Can I just ask Mr. Lobb a quick question, and that is, are you on the Trails Committee itself, or you're doing this as a pri-
I'm a volunteer steward for the Emerson Row Amble, and I've been walking the trails in Concord for 40 years.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I, I ran into Mr. Posner in Concord Center 10 days ago or so, and we had a friendly chat. And he did admit that his long-term goal was to extend the Minuteman Bikeway, and that, in fact, he considers the RBT to be an extension of the Minuteman Bikeway. He also admitted graciously that he does, he, he feels it's fine to resort to lawyers' courtroom techniques in order to make this larger, for him, very important goal come true. He also graciously conceded that my request and insistence that in public discourse, in using this very precious tool of citizen petitions and going to a public who is not made up of judges and legal professionals, that that kind of public discourse should be as truthful as possible, he conceded that that was also a fair request. Clearly, I don't mean truth, a large truth that none of us can know, no, but a truthfulness. I, I, I have tried to explain that Article 46 is not what it says it is. It is not about a conversation, and Mr. Lob's enlightening comments actually demonstrate this also. I have provided documentation for a long time for, to, 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 to demonstrate to you the collaboration between Bedford interest in extending the Minuteman Bikeway and Concord interest in extending the Minuteman Bikeway, about supporting each other by telling each town that the other one is doing it. Well, Bedford right now, as you know, passed part of its articles and did not pass the easement authorization, but there is no reason they cannot visit it again. As far as the disability access goes, the Disability Commission decided to take no action on Article 46 and Article 47. They acknowledge that all the proponents of all these two articles are certainly in favor of the mobility access, disability access to anything, frankly, who wouldn't be? However, they also recognize that this article, Article 46 or Article 47, were not about disability access. So my, my main request is that you recognize that this article is not what it says it is, and vote against it for that reason, if no other. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from, yes, please introduce yourself?
Jennifer Salt, 123 Peter Spring Road. I just wanted to reiterate the multi-use character of this trail as it already is, and the danger of losing that if we do studies that result in changes to it. It's a remarkable fact now that that trail is used by bikers and hikers, old people, young people, and it is highly accessible, in part because of the parking lots of Great Meadows, the parking near the sewage treatment plant, the field is very flat, and it gives opportunity for older people and small, people with small children to get out on a trail in a sort of bucolic rural environment that's actually more accessible than, say, a lot of the other trails in Concord. So if we take that away, we actually lose that multi-use component if it just becomes a paved trail. So it's not, paving might not get us further towards multi-use, but it might pull us back, in fact, ironically.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I'm Charles Harvey, also at 123 Peter Spring Road, and I'm going to speak against doing anything with this trail as well. But first, let me say I am all for bike trails. It was a bit of a wedge issue. I would love it if the town could connect this to West Concord, could build the bridges across the river to do that, so that I could bike to West Concord. I've commuted on this trail for decades, usually to the commuter train going downtown on it. When I'm ambitious, go the other way, all the way to Alewife, and it's a wonderful trail for biking on as is. So I don't think anything needs to be done to it, but I also, I also walk on it and birdwatch on it, and if it were paved, it would lose that. And that's, that's why I've been hanging out here all night, is to argue that it's left alone as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And no one is deciding tonight whether we are paving or not paving the trail. We're only deciding whether to study the trail.
Yes.
Okay. And what, what type of study it would be? Okay. Other questions? Okay, we will go to some more people on Zoom. Can anyone read that? Who is that first person there?
We've got Ellen Quackenbush and Lola.
I heard Ellen Quackenbush, and I didn't hear the other person, so-
Lola was the name.
Lola.
I don't think I know who that is.
Okay, Lola, I think you are first, and then Ellen.
Hi. I have written a letter to you all, whatever, an email to you all, and I hope that you had a chance to read it. I am, and I should probably have video with this, shouldn't I? I am a frequent user of the trail. I'm 69 years old. I'm not in fabulous shape, and I love the trail the way that it is. But even if I were a thorough, gung-ho advocate of spending $75,000-plus on studying it, I would be very opposed to Article 46, because it is the shape-shifting article. Every time it is presented, it is different. And I think the whole point of having our lovely booklet is so that we can know ahead of time, before town meeting, what it is we're actually talking about. I think that having attended several meetings where Mr. Posner has been speaking, every time it's different, and I just don't think that that is an appropriate way to start. I also think that if you listen to the presentation, I'm bad on names, the fellow who also presented to the, to the Trails Committee, I think he's got a much better handle on everything, and, and we don't even start with that in there. So I am thoroughly opposed to Article 46, because nobody knows what it is, it changes all the time, and I think the reason why we have a warrant is so that we know what we're voting on. Article 47, on the other hand, I think it's clear. It's a recommendation, it doesn't need funding, and it's a recommendation to keep nature natural, which, in this world that is burning up, is a very appropriate thing to do. That's all. And I'm Lola Chase on-
Could you provide your name and address, please?
Yeah, sorry, Lola Chase on 77 Walden Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we will go to Ellen Quackenbush.
Ellen Quackenbush, 206 Prairie Street. I think Lola was my straight person here. I'm going to go back to Nick Pappas's comments and say that I really agree with Nick, that we should step back and study the best current and future uses of reformatory branch. And the Concord citizens can do this and not, and should do this, not an outside consultant. I actually, and Carmen, please keep me honest here, I actually asked Carmen if I could make an amendment on town floor, at the town meeting floor, to achieve this shift. I asked if I could change the word in the amendment, grading and drainage improvement, to the best current and potential use. And Carmen said, and Carmen, please correct me, that I couldn't for two reasons. One, as Lola said, you know, we have a warrant because people want to come to town meeting and know what they're voting on. And I couldn't, like, remove the word or change the words grading, grading and drainage, because that's what people are expecting to come and vote on. And she also said that because no change in use for the trail was mentioned, the implication was that only current uses would be studied. So I really agree with Nick that it's time just to step back, do a broader study. You know, as Henry said, the environmental issues are really big in this area. The Blanding Turtles actually do cross over this trail and get squashed in the process, and that it's a perfect opportunity for a study, but it should start with the usage, the best usage, current and future, and then everything else can be brought in. I'm, you know, as much of a bicyclist as anybody else, but I think that we're, this, this article is against what I think is Concord's best practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more comment?
Thank you very much. Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I just, just want to highlight again something that Mr. Pappas mentioned, that, and I believe it was mentioned by some board members too, if we want to look at all kinds of trails and bicycle paths and things in town, we should look at that comprehensively and long-term, and this particular, kind of targeting this particular trail where there are some obvious serious challenges to, you know, dramatically changing it and certain risks and a lot of expense and long-term effort, I think we need to step back, as I believe Nick Pappas said, and, and look at the whole big picture. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other board question or comment?
I just wanted to mention that the Trails Committee did a trail walk on this trail. I was only able to do the very first segment of it before I had to race off to work, but that was just far enough, actually, already to pass over the Mill Brook right next to Concord lumber. And I don't know if you've seen that spot, but, you know, it's about four to five feet wide there, and pretty eroded, too. I mean, it's on a, on a camber going down into the brook, there's a, you know, a stone embankment below it. And, I mean, it just points out to me that there are real drainage and grading issues on that trail, in that this is an example, I mean, I, I tend to prefer, as you well know, kind of formal processes in town. I do see this as something that could be a CPC-funded article in the future. I do see the advantage of a comprehensive transportation plan, and that the Transportation Advisory Committee should be leading that process. But I also see that this is a resource in town that, you know, has been a football that's been played back and forth on the gridiron for quite some time. And I actually commend the petitioner for bringing this article forward, because I think we really need to be working on this, that this is not something that, you know, just, i- if we leave it, it will decay into a state that it would not be a multi-use trail anymore. And so I just actually, still, in spite of everything else, I, I think this is a worthy thing to get the conversation started. Again, it's a needs assessment, a feasibility study, and it has been amended as a result of feedback. of feedback, to look at current uses, natural resource protection, accessibility, public safety and convenience, consistent with the town's sustainability principles. And so I think that at this point, and I, by the way, I don't have a problem with a petitioner who has to put something in the warrant, then going to public hearings and hearing feedback and amending their article to deal with public feedback. That, there's no problem at all with that. So I support this article.
Okay. Other discussion? Tanya?
I have sent that Bedford video umpteenth times. I don't know if any of you has watched it. It's very clear that if we pass this article here, that will enable Bedford's plans to pave. And one of the, one of the concerns proponents of Article 46 have continuously expressed is that Bedford is coming to the Concord line. What are we going to do? Bedford is coming to the Concord line, what are, while trying to enable Bedford to come to the Concord line as a Minuteman Bike Way. I, I hope that you see this connection. The other comment I want to make is that Article 47, Mark and I, and, and most people would entirely endorse any action that the Trails Committee would like to take to help make this train, a trail, better usable for everyone. We don't need a $75,000 consultant to come and enable Bedford to come to the Concord line with a fast bike way and, and force us to do the same. Watch the videos, please. Thank you.
Okay. One more comment.
Super fast question. Gents, 123 Peter Spring Road. Why are we so concerned about the usage of this trail versus all the zillions of other trails in Concord? I never hear anyone else say, "X trail is not usable." I mean, there's a ton of, quote, unusable trails in Concord. So why, I don't, I'm just wondering that.
That's an excellent question. And.
I mean, there are very, very few multi-use trails in Concord.
Right.
That's the reason.
Okay.
And there, I don't think any east-west trunk trails.
All right.
That are multi-use trails in Concord, other than this.
Try and ride your bike through Fairyland.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I speak? Can I?
Henry, make sure you speak through the microphone.
Oh, I said, "Try and ride your bike through Fairyland."
So.
Can I speak?
Article.
Carrie?
This.
It's Nick. Nick?
Yeah.
All right. Nick, can you make one very more brief comment, and then we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, I just, I just want to answer that last question about why this trail is different. Virtually all the other trails are on conservation land, and there are restrictions on what you can do. Okay? It's just a different set of playing rules. This trail is not in the Conservation Easement. It's basically a trail of the Select Boards, not the Conservation Department. That's all.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Not 100% of it, I think.
So this is a very high-interest, highly emotional article. And for that reason, that is the reason why I support it. I would like to see a dialogue where all the stakeholders can have this discussion that we're trying to have at 10:30 at night, or we can spend some time. I don't care if we have a consultant or not, but some way that we can continue this conversation and figure out what we want to do. And I'm a big supporter of Article 47 as well, which would give really good direction to the consultant or the Transportation Committee or whoever is leading this discussion. If Article 47 passes, it will be a really good guideline to what we want to do with the trail. So that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm in favor of both articles. I think just that we have them on the warrant, we're finally having the conversation that we really need to have. And I'm just in favor of having the conversation. I don't want to pave the road. I don't want to do anything in particular. I just want to have everybody weigh in, so we can figure out what we're going to do. So, Mark, did you have one very brief comment? And then we're going to take last comments from the Select Board and take some votes. Wayne, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to point out, in, in response to what Matt was saying, is that we, I mean, there, there is a, a trail used by cyclists through the Minuteman National Park, all the way from Lexington. There are improvements going to be made to Route 2A. And there are, again, the Henscombe area paths and things to consider. And it's, to me, it's kind of foolish to just jump the big transportation discussion. And there's also the question about if, if you bring a lot more bikes onto Monument Street, what's going to happen there? It doesn't necessarily have to go to Lowell.
Okay. I'll give the last word to Wayne, then we're going to.
I was hoping to say something. I've had my hand raised for a while.
Oh, I, I see it now. It's very hard to see over there. Okay, just very briefly, please.
Lola Chason, 77 Walden Street. If discussion is you want, is what you want, then you should propose no action on it or no opinion on it, because you're not deciding whether it gets discussed at town meeting. It will get discussed at town meeting. It's on the warrant. What you do, if you vote yes for Article 46, is you endorse committing the town to spending $75,000 or more of our money on a study. That's what you're doing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Wayne?
Anything that's done, the ultimate decision is not going to be Concord's. It's going to be the biologists at the state level. So to go off and look into engineering, grading, anything, even that extra new thing that I mentioned, all of that is contingent on the Endangered Species Act. And so that is the thing that has to be brought first and foremost into the discussion. Otherwise, the discussion doesn't account for the facts. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. What is the pleasure of the board? Are we ready to take a vote on 46 and then 47?
Yes.
Ready? Everybody's ready?
Okay. So move to recommend affirmative action on Article 46 as amended and distributed at tonight's meeting.
And just remind me, was, sorry, second? Oh, what, discussion? Okay.
Yeah.
Funding source?
And the funding source, I think, is now identified. From unused borrowing authorization voted by 2021 Annual Town Meeting under Article 13.
Right.
It's in the, it's in the revised.
Just the funding issue.
Article.
The breathing apparatus under the capital.
So that's, yes.
So that's.
That's part and parcel of this now.
Right. But contrary to what the town manager was recommending?
Is it?
No.
It is, yes. I, I had suggested raise and appropriate, that rather than directly go after that capital article to do.
So instead of, it's transfer from unused borrowing authorization.
Right. And so it would be, instead of that, it would, the funding source would be raise and appropriate, which is taxation. And that's a, a roundabout way of using up that.
Because you would change Article 10 to be $75,000 less than what it is now?
Yes.
Okay.
So has the petitioner, have you and the petitioner talked about this at all, or?
We, we have not spoken directly about this. I, I did not see that until just before the meeting. I, I can't imagine. He, he's been working with, with staff for several months to identify a funding source. I don't think he's particular about what the funding source is.
But the article says appropriate.
The article says appropriate or transfer.
This appropriation, the town transfer.
But I mean, much printed in the warrant, 46 is.
No, but we're now looking at an amended article.
We're talking about a motion.
When was it amended?
I mean, it's, it, his proposal, this, this is what he would be bringing as a motion at town meeting.
Oh, but that's probably not in the scope of the warrant.
No, no.
No, it is.
It is in scope, because in Article 46, it says appropriate, it says, in the warrant.
Right.
So any.
So he can identify a fund.
That's right.
And that's what's.
Do we know? If Carmen sees this, if the town moderator sees this.
I don't want to speak for her, but I believe at your last meeting, this, this came up, because wasn't there a request for free cash, for transfer?
Yeah, and then there was communication between then and now.
Right. I, I believe she's still here.
I am still here. I, my, my view was that this motion was within scope, because the petitioner had left himself enough wiggle room within, within the article to identify a different source. And so this is.
Any combination of these methods.
Yes.
So this is just more specific.
Yeah. The petitioner has been working hard to find money that was lying around, that hadn't been spent by somebody else, so that there didn't need to be an additional tax levy. And this is one of the sources that he has identified. And he has been consulting with me on the question of whether various permutations of his motion would be within scope of the article. And my view is that this is certainly within scope. And whether or not, I don't have any view on, on the advisability or, or what the board should recommend.
So I guess it gets back to.
Okay, let's have the motion again, that.
Well, I don't know. I guess I would ask the petitioner, do you want to make any other changes based upon what Ms. LaFleur's just said? Or would you need to look at that offline to understand whether you need to make those changes? Then should we table this for tonight?
I'm certainly not trying to make your lives more difficult than they may have already been. I, I would want to consult with the town manager in light of her comments. I reiterate that I have been speaking with the town moderator and with staff with regard to the language and the source of funding. And I've been guided by them in, in that respect.
Yeah. And the difficulty, I think, that we find ourselves in is, you know, we could make some sort of motion that, like, provided that the, you know.
No, that's okay.
But that doesn't really work for the Finance Committee report, you know? We can't put a footnote.
If the petitioner is not comfortable, then we have to wait.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Then we're going to report on town meeting for Article 46. And Article 47, is there a motion? Well, is there any more comment on Article 47?
No.
Okay. A motion on Article 47, then. Are we ready?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I don't have a motion to make. Does anyone else want to make a motion?
Okay. Either of you want to make the motion on Article 47?
I move for affirmative action on Article 47.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Opposed, one. So Article 47, we recommend affirmative action in a vote of three to one. Okay. Now we are finally on Article 23. Kate Kavanaugh, thank you for your patience. I understand that you've been working hard with Kari, our town clerk, and also the Board of Registars. And Kari, are you there?
I am.
Oh, great. Thank you both for waiting. And. My concern was that the registrars understand and have all their questions answered. Could you hold on one minute? Okay. My concern was that the registrars have all their questions answered, so that we know whether they would be able to implement, should Article 23 pass, would the town clerk's office and the registrars be able to implement ranked choice voting if it were to pass?
And would the voters understand it?
Well, that's a different question.
Oh.
But, but, Kari, do you want to just summarize the Board of, of Registars?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So the, the registrars met with Kate Kavanaugh, the petitioner, on March 24th, 31st, and also today, to ask logistical questions about implementing ranked choice voting, based on the draft of legislation. And, and we did get a lot of responses to our questions. And we do believe that this can be implemented with a small change at the end of Section 2, so that it reads that the, the act shall take effect upon its passage, allowing for at least 64 days before the next election for implementation. And the reason for that language is that when we have candidates, they need time to collect signatures on nomination papers, and the 64 days allows for approximately two weeks to do that. So that if, if this was passed, there would be time for, for people to consider whether they want to step forward as candidates. Now, I will also say that the registrars did not take a position on whether the article ought to pass or not. This was just looking at the mechanics of the legislation.
Right. Well, thank you very much for your diligence on that. Let me just make sure I understand this change with the 64 days. So I think what the article says, that if it passes at our town meeting, it authorize and requests the Select Board to petition the General Court. So then, if the General Court passes it, does it come? No, it does not come back. It says, "This act shall take effect upon its passage." So then, you're talking about 64 days after the legislature acts. Is that correct?
Yes. So that there is at least, and the language may not be legally correct to accomplish what it is that the registrars wish to suggest. But we don't, we don't want to have the, the act pass and then be in a position, if it passes, to have to figure out how to implement it for the next election, if it takes its effect upon passage. And the legislature may decide that it has to go to the polls anyway. They can make those types of changes, and often do.
Okay. So I think we need to, Carrie, I think if you would check with town council, and, and we can figure out how to insert that 64 days as an amendment into this article, if, if that's okay with the petitioner. Kate?
That's fine. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So now we are ready for questions from the board. Henry, did you have a question about whether the voters will understand it?
I don't understand it so. Of course, maybe I'm a little slower than the average voter, but, I mean, I can't even figure, I mean, I understand the concept. But I also don't see how it eliminates the, the issues that people think about, like bullet voting. You think on a ranked choice ballot, you can still cast a, a one vote for one candidate, unless you're going to invalidate votes, ballots, that don't vote for the right number of candidates. I don't think candidates will understand it. And it's, it's really like putting the election outcome in, in a black box. I assume that everybody's second choice could win, and nobody's first choice could win, or might win, that in most of our elections, we only have, we have no more than two candidates for any one position, that is, when we're lucky. So it actually is just a waste of time anyway, because somebody's going to be the first and somebody's going to be the second. It isn't like a congressional primary, where you have 13 candidates, who are all encouraged to jump in because of public funding, and therefore, it doesn't cost them anything if they can connect, collect the right number of signatures. I think it's, might be appropriate in some circumstances. I think it's. I think it's just a lot more trouble, complication, and obscurity in our own local elections. And I don't see what the point is, except it's, you know.
Okay, Kate, do you want to respond?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And also I wanted to let you know that we have an RCV expert on the call as well, Greg Dennis, who is the architect of this in Arlington. And he can certainly address a lot of specific questions as well. But I wanted to say that this, that this is modeled on similar legislation that's passed by other communities in Massachusetts, including Arlington, Amherst, Northampton, and East Hampton. I've initiated it because I believe more democracy, more better, especially these days. And Chris Carmody is ready to show a brief visual that will explain RCV, if you'd like to take the time to do that.
Anything that requires an expert to understand is already a problem.
How, how long is this visual, Kate?
It's two and a half minutes, and I showed it to the Board of Registars, and they were very grateful.
Thirty-nine minutes?
Two and a half.
Yes.
Thirty-nine is too long.
Well, the last, the.
Okay, we will watch the.
Sixteen slides, who is going to be?
Chris, thank you very much, that would be slide four, please.
Okay, hold on.
Thank you.
Oh, it has music.
There's a little bit of a trumpet sound for you, Henry.
So what is ranked choice voting? In most parts of the United States, voters select a single candidate for each position on their ballot, and the candidate with the most votes wins. This is known as single-choice winner-take-all, which can sometimes result in the election of a candidate who earned only a small percentage of the vote, even when the majority of voters supported other candidates. But that's not the only way of electing our leaders. Ranked choice voting is another voting method which allows voters to rank their candidates in order of preference. In a ranked-choice-voting election, a candidate needs to earn more than half of the votes to win. All first choices are counted, and if a candidate has a majority, then they win, just like any other election. If not, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated, and voters who picked that candidate as number one will have their votes count for their next choice. This process continues until a candidate earns a majority and is declared the winner. Let's look at an example. Here, you select orange as your first-choice candidate, yellow as your second, pink as your third, and green as your final choice. The first choices are counted. Yellow earned 35%, orange 21%, pink earned 28%, and green earned 16% of the vote. Because nobody won more than 50%, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated, and voters who picked him as their first choice have their ballots count for their second choice. This continues until a candidate receives more than half of the votes, or 50% plus one. So what are some of the benefits of ranked choice voting? Ranked choice voting provides more choices, allowing more than two candidates to compete without fear of splitting the vote among like-minded individuals. Sometimes voters feel pressured to vote for the lesser of two evils. Ranked choice voting allows people to vote for their favorite candidate, not just against the candidates they dislike. With ranked choice voting, we see more positive campaigns and less negative advertising. Candidates are encouraged to reach out to as many voters as possible, including those supporting their opponents. They can build a winning coalition with like-minded candidates to earn voters' second and third choices. It's time to fix our democracy and make our elections work better for everybody. We can do that with ranked choice voting. Visit www.fairvote.org to find out how you can get involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, questions from the board? Linda?
So Kate, are you concerned about educating the public on this before town meeting? Also, what is the cost and to implement this, as well as if there's an auditor so that there's a paper trail?
So the first question is educating the public before town meeting. And is, I guess my, my question back is, is that the responsibility of the town clerk's office to educate the public on what it means?
Educate the public before an election?
Excuse me. Since the question was posed to Kate, fine, but actually, her point is a good one. Public education, in 2020, when we had the ranked choice voting statewide ballot, 61.4% of Concordians voted yes. So I don't think it would be an alien concept for the community. And in addition, League of Women voters are very, very supportive of ranked choice voting. And I believe that they would be very willing to help us over the next month or so with their public education channels.
Thank you. Kari, if you don't mind answering the one about the auditor and the cost there?
Yes, certainly. So I talked to the vendor who we purchased the electronic vote tabulators from. And there is additional equipment that we would either need to rent or buy when we're using ranked choice voting. And to purchase it would be $5,000. It is an election management system that would create an electronic task vote record, which is needed in order to then use freeware from a, the Rank Choice Voting Resource Center called the Universal Rank Choice Voting Tabulator. That is a logarithm that would then calculate all the different ranks as defined by Concord. So to purchase, it's $5,000, to rent, it's $1,550. And then for at least the first time of using this ranked choice voting, if it was passed, it might be prudent to have a consultant come in to, to audit as, as we use the system to make sure that it calculates and we are using it correctly. And that is another $5,000, but this would be a one-time fee. And then there, as far as the ballot printing, that cost shouldn't change, but the coding would cost additional. Ballot coding changes depending on how many, how many offices there are, how many candidates. When we have ballot language, the same goes for the, the language of, for the voter assist terminals. I don't have the exact numbers, I did not get that information. And of course, the cost for educating voters, there will, there will be a cost for that, certainly.
Kari, I have a follow-up question, which is if, in the case of our elections, we have just a single candidate standing, which unfortunately we very frequently do, or if there are just two candidates standing for a single seat position, would we just simply proceed with the conventional ballots and the conventional counting and audit and all of that stuff? We, I mean, because there wouldn't be any way to exercise the ranked choice option?
That is my understanding of it, yeah. Right, right.
I mean, because we've had very few elections where this would come into play, town elections. Right?
Right.
So we may or may not have to actually make the investment, depending. Well, and of course, this would have to be approved by this legislature. Given our track record, that could be a long wait to even get to that point.
We might make the investment and then just not use it. That would be another wonderful choice.
Right.
But, but isn't there enough, if you will, distrust of elections already where there's a simple process that everybody understands, where you just take the ballots and you count them? And you know, 75 is more than 50, and you have the, you know what the answer is? Instead of feeding them into a computer, which has an algorithm, which does calculations, which are, would be difficult for most people to understand what, in any, under any circumstances, then expect them to have more faith in the outcome?
Well, I don't think that we would be the first municipality to use this process. I mean, there is evidence out there of, you know, states and municipalities that have used this process.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean they got a better result, it just means they used it.
Right, it's just that it, this is something that I think more places are adopting over time. It's not that, oh, they, they tried it, they didn't like it, and they threw it out.
Well, if you make, yeah.
I mean, although I do believe there was a case in which the, the voting was reverted back after following this ranked choice process. I'm not saying it's universally a one direction, but for, by and large, I think there are more municipalities adopting this over time. I, I think that there is a comment from.
Yes.
The public, if we're done.
We have a comment from, I think, Lola.
I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Dane, who can't see a circumstance where this would be more of the voter's choice than, than just a straight-out, flat election. Let's say there are three candidates in town. Two of them get 33% of the vote, one of them gets 34%. But the two that get 33% are really very closely related, and people were kind of flipping a coin between them. Whereas those that supported the one that got the 34% either loved her or hated her, okay? So this would be a case where then one of those that got the 33% would end up winning because the majority of the voters really wanted somebody in that vein rather than somebody in the vein of the person who had a minority of the vote and wouldn't have come through as a winner in anything other than a winner-take-all ballot. Does that help?
That depends on what you mean is, is a, is a, is a better result. It might just be a better result to have the person who got 34% be the person that the most people wanted to have fulfill the office. I, I mean, it's, it's just a definition of how you define a good result.
Okay, Kate?
I was wondering if Greg would be allowed to speak to some of Mr. Dane's concerns. I know he has a historical and a larger perspective of the adoption of RCV.
I mean, I don't know, do, do any of us feel that?
Has anybody not made up their mind?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, it's, it's almost 11 o'clock, so.
That's fine, too.
Would that help you answer your questions?
Would you like to hear?
Do you want to hear from Greg? Or do you, are you ready to vote?
I would, I would prefer to vote knowing no more than I know right now.
Okay, all right. I think it then, that it, I thank you for attending, but I think at this stage, we really need to conclude.
Yeah, all right. I think, I agree. All right, so are you ready to make a motion?
Sure, I move to recommend affirmative action on Article 23 as amended, or as.
As amended with the 64 days.
With the 64-day addition.
The wordsmithing will be done.
After, yeah.
Okay.
Adoption of the legislature.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, so that's affirmative action, three to one. Thank you for your patience, Kate and Greg.
Thank you for your stamina, everybody.
Okay, so I would now like to spend one minute on the next item, which is find motion makers, writers, and speakers. And what I would like to do is, if each person can just take your warrant and go through with me for a minute, I've got some tentative ideas based on who is liaison, and we can see if there's any problem with it. So the first one is Articles 1, 2, and 3, we don't need anybody. And what we're talking about is speaking at town meeting. If there are questions, problems, you would, you would speak on behalf of the board for this article. If there's something to be written, you would write it up. So Articles 4, 5, and 6, I'm proposing Susan. I'll, I'll talk to Susan since she's not here. I will do 7, 8, 9, and 10. Matt, you're the tax fairness guy, so you would do 11 and 12?
Yes, though I do want to point out that, and this will be probably a shock to some people, I will not be present at town meeting.
Oh, that's right.
So I am willing to write up the position statements and all of that in advance, but if the question comes up, I will not be here.
Okay, so we will, we need a volunteer.
First time in many years.
Okay, forgot about that. Okay, I will do 13 and 14.
Again, I can write up any position statements or anything that you want.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll talk about that next time.
I mean, we maybe don't need one.
No, but some of the others we might. Okay, 15, no motion expected. 16, who would like to volunteer for the five-year moratorium on the synthetic turf? Linda or Henry, do you want to speak to?
I assume that somebody who speaks on it is somebody who is in favor of it.
Yeah, I mean, we.
We voted affirmative action on that.
So.
Linda, are you willing to do that? If not.
I'm going to have so many others.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, while the Recreation Commission did not take a position on this, I am the liaison to the Recreation Commission.
All right. Write a statement.
Do we need to actually?
We probably don't need any of these, but we're just going through just so that everybody knows what their assignment is in case it comes up.
Yeah, but if I'm not.
We're not standing up.
Then, then you are going to write a statement and I'll read it or somebody will read it.
Yes, you could read it, yes.
Okay. 17, 18, 19, 20, I'm going to do, I'll do 21 and 22. 23, ranked choice.
I could do it.
All right, Matt, thank you. 24, affordable housing.
I assume that's going to be me.
Right.
Well, I could, I'm fine with it.
Well, Linda will be here, so I think, okay, so Linda, can you do 24, 25, and 26? Okay, 27 and 8, I will do. 29, parking meters. Any volunteers for that?
I mean, I, I could do it.
Could you give me any?
Not yet, so you can volunteer, but you're getting some in a minute, so stand by. Okay, Linda, I have you for 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35. If that's all, a lot of them are consent calendar.
Yeah, okay.
What we'll do is, we'll go over this again next time.
I could pitch in on zoning by law amendments.
Okay, why don't you two talk before next week, and maybe Linda and Matt will write some up for you. I will do 36. Who wants to do 37?
I would be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Matt, I've got you for 38 and 39. Henry, you are 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44. Just going by liaison assignments. Matt, 45. Okay, who wants to do 46 and 7? I'm going to give those to Susan because she has been a big study of these two articles anyway. And I'll do 48 and 49. So what we'll do is, everybody review this. If you have a problem, we're going to talk about it again next week. We'll go over it and make sure we're okay with it.
So Matt, if you could help with a couple of the zoning ones, because I know that I'm going to
have some heavy duty on some others.
Well, how about if I take, I mean, you know, again, looking at the ones that are likely to need a statement?
Okay.
I mean, like 33.
Okay.
The, and the additional dwelling unit, I feel like I should do because that's unfinished business from when I was on the planning board.
That's number 31.
31 and 33 I could do.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we are going to move on to committee nominations.
Okay, yeah. Mark W. Giddings, 474 Barrett Mill Road, to the planning board with a term beginning June 1st, 2022, and ending May 31st, 2027.
And committee appointments?
Move to appoint James Bartlett Littlefield, 523 Bedford Street, to the Board of Registars for. for a term that expires on April 30th, 2025. And Hal Richmond of 144 Neshobah Road, to the Cultural Council, with a term that expires on April 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we now move on to liaison reports, which we are going to do next week instead, seeing as how it's after 11 o'clock. And miscellaneous correspondence, we had a lot of it this week from many people regarding many town meeting articles. And we are now on to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Okay, what about on Zoom? Yes. Carmen?
Yes. I just want to mention that on the issue of parking, in 2013, the town spent a significant amount of money having a comprehensive parking study done by Nelson Nygaard. And there are a number of paper deliverables, reports of various kinds, that are still around on that. I found during the meeting a few of them, just doing a search on the town website. And I would recommend them to you for background on data and parking and the thinking behind the decisions that the town made with respect to parking meters.
Thank you, that would be extremely helpful. We do have scheduled for the spring or summer a comprehensive discussion on parking. That will be extremely helpful, thank you. Other public comment?
She was recommending for the warrant article, too.
Oh. Carmen, are you recommending those materials as handouts for this warrant article? Or are you
Oh, no, 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 not at all. Just, just if you're thinking about parking in a more comprehensive way, that'll give you some background. The, the, the parking article is really much more of a ministerial thing that is just authorizing the expenditure of the collection of funds on the meters that exist, so.
Right.
No need.
Thank you. Kate?
I just wanted to thank you, Terry, Kari, Chris, Carmen, all of you for your support and helping me through this process. You really are amazing public servants, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any more public comments? Seeing none, we are ready for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience.